Absolutely Supervisor De Serafa, present Cummings.
Yeah.
Koenig.
Here.
Martinez, present and Hernandez.
Would any member of the board like to...
Thank you Chair. Three members of the community I'd like to dedicate today's moment of silence to. First is Al Holbert, Al, a beloved educator, innovator, and leader who dedicated his life to Cabrillo College and its students. Whether he was leading a field course in Sierras, launching Cabrillo's first personal computing class, or building the infrastructure that still serves the college today, Mr. Holbert led with creativity, commitment, and a heart. He believed in breaking down barriers between disciplines, between roles, and between people. And he built not just programs but community. His legacy lives on in the community he built and the countless lives he inspired. Al was eighty-seven years old. The next person I'd like to dedicate today's moment of silence to is Barry Swenson, a visionary developer and steadfast optimist whose impact extended far beyond the skyline of San Jose. After the devastation of the nineteen eighty-nine Loma Prieta earthquake, when others turned away, Barry stepped in helping to rebuild downtown Santa Cruz with both determination and heart. His projects like the restoration of the Palomar Hotel and the Dream Inn stand as testaments to his commitment and belief in community recovery. We honor his legacy and extend our condolences to his family, colleagues, and all who knew him. Barry was eighty-five years old. And last Felix Lozano. Felix was born in the border town of McAllen, Texas, the son of migrant immigrant farm workers. At the age of thirteen, his parents moved him to King City in Salinas Valley. An avid fan of punk rock, by the time he was in his early twenties, Lozano was throwing shows, hosting as many bands as he could to create a scene. He and his friends and the young kids in the area could be proud of, including being the co-founder of the seminal Santa Cruz County Mexican punk band Los Dry Heavers. For the past twenty years, Lozano could be found several nights a week, slinging bars, slinging drinks at the Blue Lagoon on Pacific Avenue downtown. He was a staple in the lives of not only his family and coworkers, but countless others in the area. He was often the heart and soul of the blue, able to make people laugh when tensions were high, and act as a messenger of tenacious positivity. Five days a week, Lozano also worked as a community support facilitator at Hope Services in downtown Santa Cruz. Established in nineteen fifty-two, Hope Services helps people with developmental disabilities and mental health needs to grow, learn, and function in a society that all too often overlooks them. Lozano, who worked for the company for twenty-four years in Watsville and Aptos before transferring to Santa Cruz, was incredibly proud of his work and would constantly talk about what art or photography project he was working on with his quote-unquote guys and would go above and beyond to make sure the people he worked with were treated like everyone else. On April nineteenth, Santa Cruz County community was dealt a tremendous loss when father, son, uncle, brother, musician, and beloved bartender Felix Lozano died suddenly from a heart attack. Felix was fifty-one years old.
Yes, we have one correction to the agenda today. It's on the consent agenda, item number thirty-seven. There's additional materials, a revised resolution, CSA twelve benefits assessment, FY twenty-five, twenty-six. This is packet pages nine eighty-five through nine eighty-eight, which are replaced. That's all the changes we have for today.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none? I'll turn it over to the public for public comment on any items on the consent agenda. I'd like to open up the public comment. Public comment is primarily for items not on today's regular agenda. If you'd like to comment on the consent agenda, let me repeat the public comment is primarily for items not on today's regular agenda, or if you'd like to comment on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Ready to go?
Yes.
My name is Stephen Holman. I'm a consulting registered environmental health specialist, semi-retired. I really dislike injustice, and I'm sure you all do as well. I helped fifty CZU fire families at no charge because they were being treated unjustly. With the requirements demanded of them, they were outside the requirements of the county's sewage disposal ordinance. The same thing has happened to my client, Mr. Faulkner. However, it started happening at the county environmental health service starting in two thousand and sixteen, four years before the CZU fire. However, the same law that applies to CZU fire families applies to his circumstance as well. He applied for a catastrophic loss septic repair permit prior to ten years statutory limit in two thousand and sixteen. Each member of your board has received an individual email from me covering the timeline of my clients over eight years of delay by the county environmental health service management, and a second email summarizing the situation. I know of no applicant who has ever been required to do so much to satisfy the requirements of a simple ordinance section, which is seven point three eight point oh eight OD. Over eight years, my client has spent over twenty-five thousand dollars trying to comply with the ever-changing requirements of the county environmental health service. The environmental health service management is made up of different people now. Given the facts, the proper decision should be made. Thank you very much.
Good morning distinguished members of the board. Angela Chestnut from Second Harvest Food Bank. I'm here on behalf of our CEO, Erica Padilla Chavez, who regrets she can't be here in support of consent agenda item number twenty-six, the resolution expressing opposition to federal funding cuts to safety net programs that help provide basic needs, support to the citizens of the county of Santa Cruz. Thank you for your public service, especially during these challenging times. As the only food bank in the county, we are committed to ensuring that all who are hungry and food insecure in our community have access to a basic need, food. It doesn't get more basic and essential than this. Year despite the essential need, you nourish our bodies. Currently, our goods, our food bank is nourishing over seventy thousand of our neighbors in Santa Cruz County. The proposed cuts to key nourishment programs like SNAP, CalFresh will have a detrimental impact in our community. This program serves as the first line of defense for food insecurity, and your food bank and its network of agencies serve as second. The cuts or changes to this program could potentially threaten our ability to nourish our community effectively. And this is why we are here to thank you and request that you pass the resolution against the multiple ways, including in the area of nourishment. I'd like to especially thank Supervisor Hernandez for putting this resolution forward and commend the entire board for anchoring actions and decisions that are centered in the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Good morning Board. Good morning Board. I'm Allison Vilante. I'm the Director of Government Community Relations for Watsville Community Hospital. I'm here to speak in favor of items thirty-two and twenty-six on the consent agenda today. In particular, I'd like to thank Supervisor Martinez and Supervisor Hernandez for sponsoring these two items and bringing them forward. As you know, we're the only publicly owned hospital here in Santa Cruz County, and this county played a critical role in helping keep the hospital open and becoming public at that time. And unfortunately, the cuts that we know are coming from the federal government are putting this hospital at risk. In addition to the risk it faces, the HSAs and HSD here in Santa Cruz County. And we appreciate the advocacy that you're taking in this, by putting these two items forward and continuing the advocacy to keep us alive and well. So thank you so much for your actions today.
Good morning. My name is Anita Agiri, and I am the CEO of Santa Cruz Community Health, and on behalf of the Safety Net Clinic Coalition, I am here in support of agenda items number twenty-six and number thirty-two on today's consent agenda to adopt a resolution opposing cuts to the Medi-Cal program and to communicate to our state delegation that funding to the Medi-Cal program be preserved in the state's next fiscal year budget. Santa Cruz Community Health is a federally qualified health center, and we provide primary care, behavioral health, substance use disorder, acupuncture, and chiropractic services to over thirteen thousand patients each year. Seventy percent of our patients are on Medi-Cal, and in Santa Cruz County, one in three residents rely on Medi-Cal for their health insurance. Cuts to the Medi-Cal program will have devastating effects on our community. We estimate that of our current patients, thirty-five hundred could lose coverage if the level of cuts the federal government is talking about go into effect. Such cuts would significantly affect our ability to continue to provide the breadth and depth of services to our patients, resulting in staffing reductions and service rollbacks, leading to higher emergency department utilization and poorer health outcomes. Such cuts would affect the entire healthcare delivery system, not just our clinic and not just our community. It is ironic that in times when we support, that when the support of the safety net providers is so much in need is when we see cuts to these vital programs. Thank you for your support.
Good morning Supervisors and Chair Hernandez. I'm here as Allison and Anita before me to speak about items twenty-six and thirty-two on the consent agenda. My name is Laura Marcus. I'm the CEO of De Enthus Community Dental Care, which serves patients from each of your districts. A cut to Medi-Cal is a cut to dental services. In two thousand and nine, the state of California, facing a budget shortfall, eliminated dental benefits from Medi-Cal. Half of our patients lost their insurance overnight. The impact on them was enormous. One De Enthus patient, Alan, was gainfully employed and in transitional housing, but had missed days of work due to toothaches. With no dental benefits, Alan had no option but to visit the emergency room for pain relief. But pain relief wasn't enough. Alan lost six permanent teeth between two thousand and nine and two thousand and fourteen, including a front tooth. This put him in a downward spiral, leading to depression, alcohol use, and eventually loss of employment and housing. We basically put Alan on the street by not taking the importance of Medi-Cal and cuts to dental care seriously. Saving Medi-Cal and adult dental benefits will cost money, but cutting them will cost more. In a research brief published last month by the American Dental Association, they highlighted the impact of Medicaid cuts would have on Californians and on our economy. They estimated there would be a two billion dollar increase in healthcare costs associated with dental conditions over the next five years. This doesn't include the economic impact of lost jobs and productivity all over California. With sixteen thousand patients, a hundred and thirty staff, and over sixty thousand dental visits provided each year, De Enthus cannot afford cuts to Medi-Cal or adult dental benefits. In addition to the unacceptable consequences for our patients, we may be forced to close sites or lay off staff, and it would destroy an important safety net program which has taken so much effort and many years to build. We appreciate your support.
Hello, my name is Barbara Castro. I was here last week. I know that GEMA is probably on the cutting block along with a lot of really important programs, but I'm going to rally one more time to tell you that GEMA is the only program in Santa Cruz County and other counties that only assists women. Right now, women's rights are slowly getting cut. You know, everything that we thought we accomplished in the seventies is slowly getting eliminated. And we have women in the house who have no place to go. SLEs are full. Rehab centers are full, and these are women who have struggled through being in jail for a long time, and now they're out of jail, and they thought this was going to be their way to be successful in their lives. And yet, now they're closing it. And I understand that you have so many programs, but I was hoping that maybe you would think about housing. There is some money in housing, and hopefully you could think about that to help these women stay in the house, be secure, go to school, get jobs, and get back into our society. It's really important to them, and it's really important to me and our community. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jackie. I'm a resident at GEMA. And I'm forty-four years old, and I just started getting clean. And the doors, GEMA opened the doors to me, and now that is, and now it's going to be taken away. And it's just really sad that, I mean, we don't have nowhere to go, you know? And GEMA is a really good program because we've gone through a lot of trauma in our life that's teaching us how to let that behind and stuff, you know, and just keep on moving forward. And I was just hoping that I was just going to be there for Christmas and stuff, and now I don't even know. Better just consider peace.
Morning. I'm here to speak in favor of the GEMA House program here in Santa Cruz County. I'm here to support the current residents of the GEMA House as a former resident myself. I came from a really troubled background, in and out of jail, in and out of trouble with the law. Been to every program in the city and some outside the city as well. GEMA House is the only program that has ever worked for me. Their success rate is incredible. The girls, all the girls I went, in two thousand and fifteen is when I was there, all the girls that were there at that time are still clean today. Anyways, I just learned about this last night, so I don't have a speech prepared or anything, but I did want to come and speak. You know, the city has a major drug problem, as we all well know, and it's not set up for success. So I just plead with you to consider keeping this GEMA House program open. You know, I'm standing here today, and I can speak out to you today because of the GEMA House program. I have ten years clean. From, you know, I come from, you know, where people, I did seven years incarcerated. I have nineteen felonies. Like, people said I was, I was beyond help, you know? And that was not true. I just needed the right place where I could grow and thrive and be with like-minded people that were willing to help. So the GEMA House program is important to the city. Please consider keeping it open. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alice, and as Governor Newsom has made clear, we must prioritize second chances and invest in programs that disrupt cycles of poverty, trauma, and incarceration. Programs like GEMA provide a cost-effective solution to a system that would otherwise incur far greater financial burdens. Board of Supervisors, I respectfully ask that you advocate for Measure K funding, which will ensure the continued operation of GEMA. During the pledge of allegiance, we pledged under God, and the Bible says, whoever is generous to the poor lends to the Lord, and he will repay him for his deeds. And a righteous man knows the rights of the poor, and a wicked man does not understand such knowledge. I hope you can oppose all cuts that affect the unhoused, substance use disorders, mental health, and programs that feed those in need. I know you take pride in the downtown street team, but those are the unhoused who made our community healthier. Cutting their services will lead to a negatively affected Santa Cruz. My friend's vacation home is here. Santa Cruz profits from tourists and vacationers. Who will want a vacation here if syringes are everywhere? And a more populated unhoused community. Thank you.
Morning Board of Supervisors. My name is Emily Phinean. I'm the Director of Nursing for Health Services Agency Public Health Division.
And I'm Angie Betters. I'm the Director of Nursing over HSA Clinic.
We're here to present the proclamation for Nurses Week.
Whereas nurses in Santa Cruz County play a critical role in ensuring the health and well-being of the community, and whereas in celebration of National Nurses Week twenty twenty-five, the theme established by the American Nursing Association is the power of nurses with appreciation for nurses' unparalleled impact and their contributions to healthcare. And whereas the depth and breadth of the nurse profession meets the unique and emerging healthcare needs of Santa Cruz County in a wide range of settings. And whereas nurses provide care to individuals, families, neighborhoods, communities, and systems, and are drivers of prevention and self-efficacy, and promote well-being for addressing social determinants of health for the entire continuum of life from birth to the end of life. And whereas the demand of nursing services continues to grow because of aging populations, new health challenges, and emerging public health threats.
And whereas the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by nurses are an increasingly important component of the healthcare delivery system in all settings. And whereas this year's theme, The Power of Nurses, acknowledges nurses' unwavering commitment to patients, communities, and better healthcare outcomes for all. And whereas the Health Services Agency extends its sincere gratitude to all public health nurses, clinic nurses, nurse practitioners, and volunteer nurses working in the agency for their dedication and service to the Santa Cruz County community. Now therefore, Felipe Hernandez, Chair of Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors, has proclaimed the week of May sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-five, as National Nurses Week in Santa Cruz County. Thank you.
Good morning. We're absolutely delighted to be here today to thank you for helping us with our rezoning issue. We've never had to work with supervisors before in the past, and we were just blown away by professionalism and the respect that you all gave us during this process. And even though our issue is very small in comparison to what you deal with on a daily basis, you all just really, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts. We really respect and appreciate all of the work that you do in the community. And, you know, if we can help in any way, let us know. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Gere, and I'm in District Three. And I strongly feel that we don't need prisons or jails being built. I would rather we spent that money on mental health training, compassionate caring for the police, those that are coming in contact with those people that would end up in jail. Thank you.
Can I get a handout to each supervisor and president, please?
Hi, I'm Mike Guth. I'm here to talk about item forty-four on consent. It's Moran tree cutting. It's a giant item to come through on consent and not through the Parks Commission as well. Need some fine tuning. I only have an opportunity in this amount of time to talk about a small aspect. You look at the pictures, which I hope that you have, there's a outline, there's an overhead view of the okay, now I'm using my time waiting for these to get out. There's an overhead view of the habitat with a white area outlined. I'll circle back to if you, I'm showing an overhead here of the parks with some outlines in red. That's where the parks did mitigation replanning for prior loss last fall. Super great. Thanks to Gaffney, Director Gaffney and Rob Tidmore for that. But then if you go to the next page, which is page three of the handout, you'll see the bad news. We replanted in two thousand and twenty-four for losses that were mandated to be replaced in two thousand and one. It took twenty-three years, delayed mitigation. That's one of the things I'm talking about now. Twenty-three years. I've been working on this habitat for three decades. Next page is my letter to this board about acquiring the forty Moran Way parcel. And that's a letter to the board in two thousand. The next page is the board action to acquire that parcel, retain tree space in the county. Next page is the RDA plan to fund and purchase that parcel purchased in two thousand and eight. Next page, which is the night photograph, this is where we started having problems, some tree loss, windstorms. There was a meeting on site with Parks Director that they'd mitigate on site. Per the adopted management plan for the park, three to one, twenty-one trees. That's fourteen years ago. They're still not planted. There's been three cuts since. This is a story of not doing mitigation replanning. Parks has offered up a replanning plan. It needs to be part of this package. It can't just come on the side. And the final thing that you'll see is there's a CR Club letter of the record from last fall about this parcel. It's not part of your package, but I think we need some fine tuning on this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you brief? Are you briefcase or?
Good morning, everyone. Board of Supervisors, Mr. Palacios, and County Council Heath. It is quite amazing how quickly one can find information about this stuff online. I am talking about the best facility planned for ninety Minto Road. There are two types of facilities, the first generation lithium ion and the LFP, the lithium iron phosphate. This is the latest trend that is planned for ninety Minto Road. In one of these reports, there's quite a few different, this is supporting the best facility. Right here, early cycle failures. They're saying that nearly half of incidents reported the age of the system. And almost half of these incidences occurring within the first six months of operation, meaning there was a thermal runaway incident within six months. This report was compiled by Fire and Risk Alliance LLC for the American Clean Power Association. The rest of the report goes on saying how wonderful, you know, the whole technology is. The thing is, is the lithium itself is what is dirty. It is not clean energy. Okay? The, there's other reports, this one here about China. They have one year using sodium ion in a large-scale facility. There's no issues with thermal runaway. They run much cooler. Okay? Again, the reason why they're using lithium is because of profits. It can store more energy, denser, and of course, then it has propensity to ignite. I hope you take some of this information to heart and have a good day. Thank you. Thank you.
Morning Board for the record, Monica Morales. I am very pleased to be here today to introduce Dr. Sanaba, who's our new Behavioral Health Director. She comes with the wealth of background and knowledge local to our area as well. So I'm just going to leave it up to her now to introduce herself, but super pleased to be here with her.
Thank you. Good morning to you full board, distinguished supervisors. It is absolutely my pleasure to be here, second day as your Behavioral Health Director. I know Dr. Morales, Director Morales has shared much of my background in some written materials that were provided at a previous session. So I won't spend time speaking about that, but I just want to share at this moment that I'm looking forward to getting to work with each of you. I know that there are challenges ahead, but from my experience in public systems, challenges are nothing new. I see them as opportunities for innovation, creativity, and community partnerships. So I know together, as we work through these things, we will find ways to make sure our community has what they need for their specialty mental health needs and their substance use needs. Thank you.
Before you start my clock, may I ask if item twenty-nine was pulled from the consent agenda?
No items were pulled.
No items were pulled. All right, thank you. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I am a resident of rural Aptos. I had asked that consent agenda item twenty-nine be pulled because I think it is a big waste of money for Third District to spend twenty-six thousand dollars from the Measure K funding to do a feasibility study on a bike pedestrian path along Cement Plant Road in Davenport. This work has already been done. It was a part of a mitigation that the county and the California Public Utilities Commission required of Barry Swenson Builder as a condition of approval for their new private at-grade rail crossing on Parade Street in Aptos Village project. The CPUC agreed to allow the Parade Street new crossing if two such private at-grade crossings were closed. The county of Santa Cruz chose the Waranella Crossing up in Davenport as one of those two, the other being the Bayview Hotel entrance. As part of closing the Waranella Road crossing, the county required Barry Swenson Builder to do, to put in a bicycle pedestrian pathway along Cement Plant Road because of the negative impacts closing Waranella would cause on Davenport's new town. This feasibility study was done. They didn't do the plan, the path, but the work has been done, so please don't waste any county money doing it again. That's why I asked it to be pulled. My, my, my final comment is that I sent each of you a link to a video showing the two largest battery manufacturers in the world switching to sodium ion battery technology, and I asked for your feedback. I haven't received anything yet, but I look forward to the discussion and a town hall, May twelfth.
Thank you.
I have agenda seven. Do I speak after that in regards to minutes?
After, yes.
Well, good morning. My name is James Ewing Whitman. Some say the road to hell is paved with the seventeen sustainability goals. Goals that came into this county in nineteen ninety-three under the Seeds Project and were adopted into protocol in nineteen ninety-seven. It's a lot of nefarious stuff going on. I'm just going to read this. I thought it was funny. I found it this morning. To verify viral infection at a hospital, they must To verify viral infection at a hospital, they must often use a test that isolates antibodies. If you test positive for antibodies, you're determined to be infected with the disease. Down the hallway at the vaccine clinic, if you test for antibodies, you're determined to be immune. If logic was more abundant in our culture, that would stand out as a really big red flag that there's a major lie going on somewhere. I don't even know what to say, you know, I don't, I would certainly stand and pledge allegiance to the flags that are outside this building, which do not have the gold maritime pirate fringe. I think if anybody were to read the Declaration of Independence, they would demand that those flags be thrown out the door. What does that say about other issues going on? So I usually like to speak first. I'm not quite sure what to say. That's, well, I'll make a comment. I engaged and said hello to somebody who I thought was putting up more art. But as it turns out, the art in this building is being brought back to the children. I think that's one of the most amazing things in this room. I took over ten minutes of video of the art this morning because it may not be here tomorrow. You know, it really implies that this government building is for the children. I'm not seeing as much of that as I would like, and that's enough for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
Before you start the clock on me, um, I, I'm hoping to do this every time. Before you start the clock, I'm respectfully asking that you allow two and a half to three minutes as per the Brown Act. Two minutes is not
Okay, then start the clock.
Oh. Can you, I, I hadn't said anything yet. Please restart the clock. My name is Nina Adino. As you know, you've met me. I live in Santa Cruz County in rural Coralitis. I want to thank you again for your right action in slowing down our county's adoption of a best ordinance. And I'm asking you again to please convene an impartial technical advisory committee of experts. We need fire experts, battery engineers and former best developers on our technical advisory committee. And what about the town hall you promised to hold? Why are you not inviting the public to the table in this critical community process? What are you afraid of? Don't you want to trust the democratic process? Don't you want to uphold it? Listening to the public will gain you critically important insights that you're blinded to if you persist in delimiting yourself to sitting in the box of marketing ads designed for you by the developer who's overriding goals or profit and a return on their investments. Surely you must know that. Currently, the world's two largest battery manufacturers, CATL and BYD, have already begun large-scale mass sodium ion production. So is Natron, a Santa Clara-based SIB manufacturer with one facility already producing and another huge manufacturing facility in construction in North Carolina. That puts SIB batteries high on what the market calls technological readiness level, probably at a nine, the highest tier. Um, Japan is heavily investing in SIB research with plans to transition out of an unsustainable lithium-dependent energy infrastructure. CATL, who has a forty percent market share of batteries right now, projects a market shift in which sodium ion batteries replace up to half of the market for lithium iron phosphate.
Thank you. Anyone online?
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online. Call in user two, your microphone's now available.
I call for an immediate halt moratorium on any plans for these lithium ion battery locations in our county. We know what happened at Moss Landing. We don't know the long-term disastrous effects, but what's dangerous should not proceed, period, end of paragraph. As with vaccines are unavoidably unsafe, this is another topic of toxicity. That's what the Supreme Court stated in nineteen eighty-six. And now we're hearing in the news a lot about the measles epidemic and there's an article from Children's Health Defense, Mary Holland, from April eighth. The media playbook for measles looks a lot like its COVID playbook. This time, kids are the pawns and in part it states we are in the midst of another full-on attack by the pharmaceutical industrial complex aided and abetted by a beholden mainstream media united around its allegiance to a sixty-nine billion vaccine industry. And when we hear of children dying of measles, what if that's, what they don't say is that in fact, between two thousand and twenty twenty-four, during the same time period, a hundred and forty-one deaths following the vaccination with MMR and MMRV reported to the U.S. Vaccine Adverse Advance Reporting system. This is not overwhelmingly safe vaccine.
Thank you.
They're dangerous and should not.
Call in user eight-two-zero-four, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. Caller eight-two-zero-four. Your microphone's now available. You may begin speaking.
All right. Good morning. My name is Diane Benton and I live in South County and I'm calling today regarding the planned energy storage site on Minto Road in Washington. I'm asking the Board of Supervisors to actively research the sodium ion battery. You've now heard of the flammable, non-toxic, non-environmental profile of these lithium batteries. Data centers around the world are already looking into the sodium ion batteries as alternative to the problems that lithium batteries bring. In Santa Cruz, uh, uh, people are not opposed to battery sites. We just want them to be safe, ultimately safe. And we do think that the sodium ion batteries are that way to go. And what we want the board to do is to actively research these and, 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 and bring them to the table so we can all discuss them and learn more about them. It's a good idea to just take the time to research what's out there, what's new. We do not want to be stuck with the old technology and the toxic problems that lithium brings. We do not want to be the guinea pig and at the tail end of lithium while everybody else is moving on to sodium ion. So please consider a moratorium and researching alternative batteries that we bring the information to you. All right. Thank you very much.
Call in user one-six-two-eight, your microphone's now available.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, hi. My name is Rich Buckingham. I'm, I'd like to speak again about vaccines. I'd like to quote from a book called The Unfortunate Truth About Vaccines by Leon Kennerow, a Aptos author. Okay, diseases associated with poor living conditions. Below are some of these diseases associated with poor living conditions that dissipated before the accident, the advent of vaccines and antibiotics. Typhoid fever. Typhoid fever is caused by the cell amount of bacteria and feces that contaminate the food and water supply. cholera, cholera is a bacterial infection of the small intestine caused by poor sanitation that leads to dehydration, to diarrhea and dehydration requiring copious amounts of water to hydrate the body. Dysentery is an inflammation of the intestines caused by bacteria brought by fecal contamination of food and water. Hydration is critical owing to the loss of body fluids from diarrhea. These descriptions are also true of typhoid fever, scarlet fever, tuberculosis and yellow fever. Although these diseases have largely disappeared in developed countries today, they continue to be a major source of devastation in the areas of the world where poor living conditions still exist. To that, I'd add, don't take vaccines, change the environment. Here's a chart. Of course, you can't see it, but I can re-describe it for you. U.S. Disease Mortality Rates. The following chart, vital statistics of the, of the United States maintained by the U.S. Government shows the mortality rates of these various diseases, measles, scarlet fever, typhoid, Wubencoff and diptheria from nineteen hundred up to the nineteen sixties. The dramatic decrease in these diseases was the result of improved living conditions due to improvement in sanitation, nutrition and, and medical care. And to that I add again, not vaccination. The vaccine for Wubencoff came out in the late
Ian, your microphone's now available.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, yeah, I live on Plaza Street, um, dialing in about the Plaza Street trees and the plans to trim around the Moran Lake area. We have a meeting on June twenty-fourth to talk to talk, Robert Tidmore, to comment on some plan, but from what I understand, the plan's being voted on today. Uh, it seems to me that the timing is off as the, the neighborhood has yet to be able to comment on the plan or see a plan other than an email. So I advocate delaying the vote until the county can present the plan and the neighborhood can digest the plan and comment on said plan. Um, because it is a dangerous situation underneath these trees. And, um, we're concerned about tree fall, um, as it happened in June, or sorry, February fourth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, that's all I have to say.
Paige, your microphone's now available.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Um, thank you. My name is Paige Gordon. I live adjacent to Forty Moran Way. Um, I'll make this quick. I just want to echo Michael Gulf's comments and urge the Board of Supervisors to read his packet that he handed out to you guys because he really is um, the neighborhood expert on all things related to Moran Park. And there's just such a history there that I hope you guys take the time to read it and really understand before you make the vote. Um, and then I just want to echo what Ian just said, which I think the timing here is a little strange that we're voting on a plan to move forward with things in the park before we've had a meeting with the public about the Habitat Plan. That's it. Thank you.
Roland, your microphone's now available.
Uh, hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so again, a quick, a quick comment on the plan for the butterfly management and tree management around Plaza Street in the pumping station, in the pumping station here. I definitely think we need to have a serious conversation because this is a very, we, we almost had a number of people killed. We've had houses crushed. We had a electrical lights flapping around on the ground during the storm that could have started the whole neighborhood on fire. And our butterfly plan brushes over all this, no mention, just kind of like, well, we'll look at things. They were there to do, to do some maintenance. Well, let's see. Before the big storm, uh, two years ago, they did a study and they trimmed seven trees and they had forty-one fall down in the storms. One at the end of our street, if the people hadn't been there, they would be dead as a doornail and went right through their house. I have trees behind me that are about a hundred and sixty feet tall. Two, two branches of those trees coming up from one small base on poor soil, soil. None of this is, is addressed. So I think we need to pull back from initiating this plan until we have discussion of it with the neighborhood and the, and the planners. Because there has been none. They said there would be there and there's nothing. It took them fourteen months to do a wind study. So I think that this is a very serious area for the whole neighborhood and certainly the people around it, but a fire danger and being killed by trees is very real. Okay, thank you for your, your time.
Chair, we have no further speakers.
Thank you. And I'll bring, bring it back to the board for any comments or questions or to move the agenda, move the consent agenda. I'll start to my immediate left.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everybody. It was nice to hear the public comment this morning and really appreciate it when folks who've experienced county programs come to speak up because it takes a lot of courage to do that. Also, I just want to say thank you to, or welcome to Dr. Sandoval. It's great to have you here and look forward to partnering with you. And to all of the nurses out there, happy Nurses Week. We really appreciate all of your service. I just have a couple of comments. Um, the first is on item number twenty-six. I want to thank the CEO for bringing this forward to detailed impacts of federal funding cuts to our most vulnerable community members. And on that resolution, I hope that it's I hope that our federal delegation, Congressman Panetta and Lafran will receive that letter. So if additional, I'm not sure if additional direction is needed to ensure that they receive that letter. That might have been the intent, but it isn't stated or isn't clearly stated in the item. In the same regard, um, on item number thirty-two, I want to thank the Chair for partnering with my office to bring this forward to send a letter to our state leaders and to the California State Association of Counties regarding the impact of Medi-Cal cuts on our community members. And to advocate against those cuts. To be honest, I'm deeply concerned about any proposed cuts to Medi-Cal and what that will, the impact that will have on our safety net on those who desperately need these services. And we know that it trickles down. It will impact our safety net clinics. It will impact our oral health clinics. It'll impact the county services and the families and communities here locally. So really anything that we can do to protect healthcare coverage for those who are most vulnerable feels like a very big priority. And so this letter is a start. Um, I feel like our board needs to really flex our advocacy muscles anywhere that we can to really protect against those type of cuts because they will be devastating to our community. On item number thirty-one, um, thank you Chair Hernandez for inviting me to sign on to the letter in support of Senator Laird's bill, the Clean Energy Safety Act. Um, as we've heard over multiple meetings, our community is concerned about battery energy storage and just has a lot of questions. And while many of those questions aren't answered yet, um, this bill really helps any further action be in compliance with National Fire Protection Association standards. Um, and it's just a step in the direction of ensuring that our communities are safe of potential fire impacts of battery storage as further information comes to light about how and where we do continued battery storage across the state of California. And then my final con- comment is on item number forty, the Grey Bears contract extension. I just want to thank our partners at CDI as well as Grey Bears, our contractor at the Ben Loman Transfer Station for the cooperative work to date for the onsite recycling services there. I really support this extension because it'll allow our county to better prepare for a smooth transition to take these services in-house. And I just want to say that Grey Bears has been a really terrific partner in the service over the last few years since they took it on from the Valley Women's Club. So thank you for that continued work and just really appreciate their partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor Koenig.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna concentrate my comments on, comments on item forty-four, approving the agreement with Lewis Tree Service, the amount of three hundred thousand dollars for vegetation management efforts at Morin Lake County Park. I have a few comments, but actually I, I see our Director of Parks, uh, Mr. Gaffney in the audience and our Deputy Director, Hurley, who I know has worked closely on this issue, I'd invite you to the microphone uh, just to answer a few questions. I think this will just help clarify the situation for both uh, the public and my colleagues. While you're coming up, um, I want to thank the CEO's office for identifying funds that we could proactively address the issue in this area. It is an incredibly challenging urban forest uh, and also critical habitat for monarch butterflies. Um, and as such, there's just a constant tension in how do we ensure that the habitat is as healthy as possible? Uh, and also to reduce risk because it's as the immediate residents are concerned. And, um, this, I think, will go a long way towards rebalancing that and ensuring that we're preserving safety for everyone who Um, and, um, this, I think, will go a long way towards rebalancing that and ensuring that we're preserving safety for everyone who lives in the neighborhood. Um, so just a few questions. I, um, the first was, um, sorry, um, on, on timing, it was brought up, you know, that we are having a meeting with the public in June, um, about the habitat management plan. Can you comment on, you know, why we're seeing this proposal for work now? I know we have a very limited, uh, timeframe, which we can do work in the, uh, in this entire area because of the nesting, the roosting season, which, you know, begins October fifteenth, I believe, and goes through March, uh, fifteenth. And so I know that sort of times of the essence here and, and doing anything proactive, can you just comment on the timing and how you anticipate, um, review of the final habitat management plan with, with this work?
Yeah. Hi, good morning. Rebecca Hurley, Deputy Director of County Parks.
Get a little closer to the microphone, sorry.
Yeah. Um, so we, thank you. Um, so we have chosen, um, to move forward with this tree work right now because it is reduction of height. We are currently working with Environmental Health on the significant tree removal permit for forty Moran Way. I'm not sure when that removal will actually occur, but the reduction of heights is going to occur, um, right now because we need to get on the schedule with our preferred vendor, Lewis Tree Service, before they start to get busy as the, you know, better weather comes about. Um, as well as we need to make sure that we're following it before we get it close to the roosting season in the fall.
Okay. And then as far as the, um, addressing the trees along Placer Street, would that be another phase of, uh, sort of management actions? And when you anticipate that we'd see action there?
Yeah, so, um, we, we did have a conversation about the plaster, um, you know, windbreak and that, those trees were actually reduced in height, um, last year, I believe. So there is a plan to look at doing more reduction heights of those trees next year. It's just financially, we needed to make a decision about what we could do this year.
And so when you say next year, we're talking about next calendar year or next fiscal year?
Um, yeah, next, next, next calendar year, this time next year.
Okay, yeah, I did, um, have a chance to go see those trees and there's sort of a bit of a step down program where the trees closest to homes, uh, have been reduced in height. Definitely an opportunity to do more, though. Um, now, I know there was some confusion because, um, one of the attachments, the Morin Lake Monarch Butterfly Habitat and Tree Management Assessment had a scenario that studied reducing, uh, the trees in height to fifty to seventy feet. Um, but the work plan, uh, with Lewis Tree Service calls for a twenty five percent reduction in height. Can you just explain, like, I mean, would, would trees be reduced less than eighty feet or like what approximately what height we're talking about?
So the twenty five percent reduction does calculate out to that fifty to seventy feet per tree.
Okay. And I know it seemed like with the rest of that, that same study I was referred to as the wind study, uh, that eighty feet was kind of determined to be the optimal height, at least from the critical wind, windbreak. Why would we go lower than, than that?
So it's a, it's a reduction down to eighty feet. And so that, it, it obviously the trees, you know, vary in height throughout. So that's why there's kind of a range. Um, but we're, we're doing it at the amount that we can, um, per the wind study and per what is, uh, under the current habitat management plan.
Okay. Then finally, is there a, is there a replanting plan for the forty Moran Way parcel?
Yeah, um, so we provided environmental health along with the application for the significant tree removal permit, a draft, um, replanting plan for forty Moran Way. And we plan on continuing to work with them on finalizing that plan.
Okay, great. So we've actually have submitted for the, uh, a permanent application to environmental health?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, sure. Those are all my questions. If any of my colleagues have questions.
Yeah, just a follow up on the mitigation plan. Can you just talk about the, um, the timeline it takes to replant those trees? There was a comment about kind of a delay.
Sure, thank you. Uh, Jeff Gaffney, Director of Parks, um, Mike Guth came up and spoke about a lot of history with Moran Lake specifically. And he did talk about fourteen years ago, he was promised, um, that trees would be planted. Um, the number of trees that need to be planted, fourteen years ago, I wasn't Parks Director, just to be clear. Um, and Mike was one of the first people I spoke to. Um, it took us a long time, I will admit, to get trees planted. Um, we did just recently, within the last year, plant trees out there. It's always very challenging with this very delicate habitat to both remove and reduce trees that are providing habitat and then plant trees in place of those. So it's sort of a transition. We're trying to change the entire habitat, um, by changing the species of plants. Um, but every time we remove a tree, there is a requirement on us that we plant it back three to one. Um, so we have a number of trees that we're already behind on. Um, in addition to that, we're looking at the removal of those trees at Moran Way and so forty Moran Way. So that's going to be a number of another trees. So it's not easy to just say, we remove the trees, we're going to go plant them. We have to figure out they're going, there's a mortality rate with them, how many are going to survive? Where's the best place for them to land? Where's the best place for the habitat? So, um, we did present a plan, a draft plan. We want to incorporate that with our habitat management plan because that's the right thing to do. And we look forward to doing that. Um, so I absolutely agree with, uh, Mike that we have done poorly in the past and we are moving much better in a better place with it. It's taken us a long time. There's a lot of resources that, uh, it takes to both plant the trees, purchase the trees, first of all, they're expensive, and then also to sustain them. You can't just plant them and say, we're done. Um, they have to actually be sustained.
Thank you. I, I appreciate you describing that for me.
Um, all right, I know we're not quite at the point where we're ready to make a motion, but I, I'll just describe, I think, what I think I see as some of the solutions here to make sure we kind of get this in the Goldilocks zone of, you know, cutting enough, but not too much, uh, and ensuring that the replanting plan is included. So, uh, when it comes to, I'll, I would, uh, ask the Chair if I could ring in, make a, add additional direction to this item that one, the Parks Department permit application for this work in the project description explicitly includes a replanting plan for the forty Moran Way parcel that includes approximately forty five native trees. Uh, two, that an amendment be added to the agreement with Davy Tree Expert Company Attachment A, scope of work. Number two, that the reduction, uh, will be accomplished only by a reduction of height and not by limbing up the trees from the base and that no tree will be reduced in height to less than eighty feet. And three, authorizing the Santa Cruz County Parks Commission to make amendments to the scope of work in the future, uh, if needed.
Thank you. Amendments.
Thank you, Chair. Um, item number twenty six, um, related to opposing federal cuts to safety net programs. So I want to thank kind of Executive Officer for putting this on our agenda. I think it's really critical at this point in time that we're trying, that we're making sure that we're, um, expressing to the greatest extent possible the impacts these cuts will have on our community and do everything we can to keep that funding intact. Item number twenty nine, um, CDI, this is an item that, um, I brought to, I'm bringing to the board regarding cement, cement, plant, road feasibility study. I do have a question for clarification for, um, our CDI Director, Matt Machado, if you please approach the podium.
Good morning. Matt Machado, you're CDI Director.
Morning. Um, I'm just wondering if you could comment on some of the comments that were made during public comment regarding, um, the closure of Warnella Road and, uh, a potential bike pedestrian feasibility study that may have already occurred.
Right. Good, uh, it was a good comment. So back in that day, we did look at a, um, an improved roadway. Uh, but it was intended to just serve Newtown and it was not a feasibility study. It was just looking at a road improvement to provide a safe path for, uh, residents in Newtown to get to downtown Davenport. This new effort is really looking at connectivity to the National Monument, which is a really completely different, um, goal. And, um, and since we never really, we never did do a feasibility study, we did a, uh, a civil plan to just do some minor shoulder improvement. And so this is a, a different level of effort. In fact, this will probably look in at alternatives. We never looked at other alternatives. So this will be a completely new study with a new scope and a new mission.
Great, thank you. And I just want to, um, you know, for the public and, and board members, I mean, this is really to address, um, safety concerns on this road. Because if you've ever been on this road, there's no sidewalk or anywhere for people to walk or bike safely. And with the increase in traffic that we'll likely see with, um, the National Monument opening up and the rail trail opening up, we're really trying to make sure that we have a safe area for people to, for children to walk, to get to school, for people to bike. And so that's the reason for moving this forward. And I will also say that, um, the Bureau of Land Management is actually chipping in, uh, a bunch of money to help complete this study. So that's really going to help, um, offset the costs to the county and the county residents. So really want to thank CDI for being available to help us with this project and look forward to, uh, the study when it's complete. Thank you. Um, next item, I just want to thank, um, my colleagues, Supervisors Martinez and Hernandez for, um, um, putting on item number, um, thirty one regarding, uh, the battery state, the battery safe storage facilities, uh, bill that's being promoted by Senator Laird. This bill is, um, moving forward at the state legislature. And I think that, you know, given all the comments that we, we're hearing about needing to have safety as the top priority for these types of facilities, um, this bill is really trying to address a lot of the concerns we have because while, um, the, uh, Moss Landing Fire was very traumatic, you know, in terms of us trying to reduce our carbon, carbon emissions, battery storage facilities are going to become a part of our reality here in California and throughout the world. And I think as we have, um, natural gas, um, facilities, as we have petroleum refiners, we really need to try to make sure that as these facilities come on board, that they're done in a way that's going to be safe and compatible with our communities so that we don't see fires like we saw down in Moss Landing. Um, next item is, um, item number thirty two, um, related to sending a letter to our state legislators, um, to, um, requesting that essential Medi-Cal funding be preserved. Um, fully supportive of this, and I want to thank Fifth District and Fourth District for bringing this forward. Uh, when we were at the California State Association of Counties meetings a couple of weeks ago, um, this was one of the top items of discussion, um, throughout the state. And so, um, I know that it's on their minds, but I think that, again, sending letters, just expressing our support doesn't hurt. And we should be doing, again, everything we can to try to preserve that funding. And then finally, um, I just want to, um, express my support of Supervisor Koenig's, um, amendments to the, um, Lewis Tree Service, um, item related to vegetation management at Moran Lake. Um, I think that there is a balance that can be found and, and I know that, um, given that some of the trees have fallen on houses and now that has led to lawsuits, um, we really need to find a balance between preserving our natural habitat and ensuring public safety. And I think that what we're really trying to do is, is strike that balance. And so I just want to thank, um, Supervisor Koenig and for members of the public for coming up and expressing their concerns. And, um, look forward to seeing how we can move forward in a way that balances environmental protection and public safety. That concludes my comments.
Supervisor Serpa.
Thank you. Um, again, I'd like to welcome Dr. Marnie Sandoval to our county. I, I served along Marn, alongside Marnie. Uh, Dr. Sandoval is a psychologist in Monterey County where she did a lot of wonderful and innovative, um, programs, um, for children and, and adults, uh, in Monterey. So welcome, Dr. Sandoval. We're so glad that you chose to work for Santa Cruz County. Um, also to our nursing colleagues, happy National Nurses Week. Um, nurses serve, um, both here in the county as public health nurses in our clinics, hospitals, um, community clinics, home health and hospice, long-term care and psychiatric facilities, regional center, private duty and others. Um, I've worked alongside and supervised, uh, many nurses over my career and, um, I'm very honored, uh, to honor them, uh, with National Nurses Week. Also, item twenty eight, thank you to Dr. Brian Woodward, um, for agreeing to serve on Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commission. Um, he'll be a wonderful asset. He has a PhD in forest management, wildlife and ecology and will be a tremendous asset. Um, I also would like, um, to, to say I strongly support the resolution, item twenty six, that cuts federal safety net programs like CalFresh Medi-Cal and CalWorks would hit our most vulnerable residents, including children, seniors and people with disabilities. As a county, we should be loud and clear and standing up to protect these basic supports. And I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. Along the same vein, thank you to Supervisor Martinez and, uh, Hernandez for item thirty two, letting our state delegations know we need to preserve Medi-Cal. Um, this will be a disaster for our county and, uh, for our state. Um, when the, when and if these cuts go into effect. And I thank our hospital partners and clinic partners for coming today and illustrating, uh, the devastation that, um, potentially will happen here. And item forty three, as a former PVUSD trustee, I'm proud to support the partnership with County Parks and Paharo Valley Unified School District for free summer programs that give our kids a safe and fun place to learn and grow and make a real difference for working families in our community. Uh, and finally, on our, can I talk on, about something on the regular agenda? Now, no, okay. And I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have several items, but I'll be extremely brief. Items twenty six, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, forty-two, forty-three. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank all the nonprofits that came here today and spoke on public comment and wish all our medical professionals a happy Nurse, Nurses Week. And also I heard a lot of great things from my colleagues in, in Monterey County. So I want to welcome Dr. Sandoval here to our county, Santa Cruz County. So item twenty six, um, I want to thank, uh, Second Harvest for working with us, uh, to bring this forward, uh, in the CEO's office for, for putting, putting it on. Uh, I want to welcome my new mental health, um, committee commissioner, Lourdes Barasa. And I would like to thank Supervisor Martinez for joining me for, uh, item thirty one and thirty two, uh, SB two eighty-three. You know, for SB two eighty-three, it really provides a crucial tool and safeguard to ensure battery storage facilities are built and maintained with the highest level of safety and oversight by our local fire officials. So it's something that's really important. Uh, of course, it's already been said, but item thirty two, to preserve Medi-Cal, we have to preserve our safety nets, uh, especially in, you know, South County. I think that we have a lot of need for this. And item forty-two, I want to thank CDI for doing some work on Casterly. I was, uh, happy when I see that. Uh, item forty-three, uh, PVUSD, uh, summer programming. It's always exciting to have the, the, the schools open up their parks, uh, especially in South County. We, where we have very limited parks in, uh, South County. So that concludes my remarks and I'd like to bring it back to the Supervisor Koenig to entertain a motion.
Thank you very much, Chair. So I'll move the consent agenda with additional direction on item forty-four, that one, in the Parks Department permit application for this work, the project description will include a replanting plan for the forty Moran Way parcel that includes approximately forty five native trees. And two, an amendment be added to agreement with Davy Tree Expert Company Attachment A, scope of work. Number two, that the weight reduction will be accomplished only by a reduction of height and not by limbing up the trees from the base. No tree will be reduced in height to less than eighty feet. Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Second. So we have a motion, uh, from Supervisor Koenig, a second from Supervisor Cummings. Can we take a roll call?
Supervisor De Serpa?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. So I do want to remind everybody, we do have a scheduled, scheduled item at ten forty-five. Uh, but for now, item number seven, the next item on the agenda is number seven, hold a jurisdictional hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of appeal of development permit, twenty-two, ten forty-nine, regarding the proposed wireless communication facility located at one eighty-six, uh, Summit Drive. I do have, uh, an-
Chair, can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
I just want to ask, um, County Council, just given that that item might go on for some time, is there any potential way we can move some of the shorter items up? In order, since we'll have-
The Chair has discretion to do that. However, I don't know if the folks who, uh, need to be here for those later items are here right now.
So I, I do want to note that this, this is a jurisdictional hearing and the board will be deciding whether to take jurisdiction of this matter based on the criteria outlined in the staff report. We will first hear a brief presentation from, from staff on the item. After staff report, we'll hear from the appellant or applicant for no more than ten minutes. After hearing from the appellant and applicant, there's an organized group opposing the application. We will hear from the group's designated representative for no more than ten minutes. After that, we'll take general public comment on the item, only two minutes per speaker. After that, we'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments and a motion.
Good morning. I'm Sheila McDaniel, Principal Planner for Development Review of CDI. Um, as the slide notes, this is a proposal to modify an existing communication facility, um, submitted on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two by CTI. It includes, it includes a removal of the existing seventy foot tall, six inch, um, guide lattice tower and, and related equipment. Satellite dish, add twelve foot six tall lattice tower and chain link fencing, replace with approximately hundred and fifty-one point one foot tall wireless communication facility, camouflaged as a monopane with nine panel antennas associated wireless equipment, a generator within the existing equipment building, outdoor propane tank, repainted, uh, equipment building, landscape screen and other miscellaneous improvements, as well as, uh, surrounded by a new chain link fence with green slats and barbed wire. This project- This project includes a commercial development permit, exception to height and a secret determination. Next slide, please. Guess that's me. Okay. So the property is located on the east side of Summit Drive at one eighty-six Summit Drive, approximately seven hundred feet northeast of Empire Grade and three miles north of the intersection of Felton Empire Road and Empire Grade Road. The upper left image is a visual simulation of the approved project by the zoning administrator on Summit Drive as seen through the understory of the trees. The lower left image is the approved facility as seen to few properties on Summit Drive to the southeast. No other views, private or public of the facility would occur. Patrick Road here is also shown for reference because it's identified as an alternative site to the proposed Summit Drive wireless facility. That actual site is a rectangular site extending up from Patrick Road from the Patrick Road Arrow perpendicular to Patrick Road. So the basis for the zoning administrator's project approval included as an alternative analysis, which established a significant gap in the identified coverage for AT&amp;T, as certified by their wireless radio frequency engineer. In addition, the alternative analysis established that there were no viable or technically feasible sites available to substantially fill the gap in coverage. And that there were no alternative sites to fill the gap or that were also there were non-viable, including Patrick Road. That would fill the gap. In addition, the zoning administrator found that there were no visual impacts to mapped public roads and visual resources protected by the general plan by the proposed facility and determined that private views from Summit Drive would be addressed via camouflaged pine tree landscaping as conditioned. The project meets the ordinance objectives to substantially fill the gap in coverage and minimize visual impacts to private views to the maximum extent feasible with proposed landscape screening, branching and fencing as required by the wireless ordinance. And lastly, the radio frequency report and noise compliance meet both the FCC standards and our general plan noise threshold regulations. So therefore, the zoning administrator was able to make the findings required to grant the permit, including that the project will not significantly affect any designated visual resources, environmentally sensitive habitat, rather significant designated or protected county natural, cultural resources, historic resources, et cetera. And that there is no alternative to the proposed wireless facility, including the Patrick Road facility that would substantially fill the gap. So then moving on to the planning commission. Following the zoning administrator's decision, the item was appealed on January thirty-first by the Bonnington Residents for Responsible Cell Coverage. On March twenty-seventh, the planning commission considered the project appeal and put most of the appeal issues to rest with the exception of concerns regarding the potential environmental impacts from the project, as well as interest in further evaluation of Patrick Road as a potential alternative site to put that site to rest. At that time, they did not raise a gap in coverage as a basis for continuance. However, the commission continued the project for preparation of an initial study to evaluate environmental impacts and also asked the applicant to provide a detailed comparison between Patrick Road and Summit Drive to thoroughly exclude Patrick Road as an alternative site. The comparison was directed to include wireless propagation maps, facility heights necessary to address the coverage gap, public visual impact simulations and private neighborhood visual impact assessments to ensure a balanced evaluation of these factors. On February twelfth, the planning commission considered the alternative analysis and the initial study negative decoration. And in their decision, they made a determination that there was no gap in coverage based on information provided by the public indicating that the AT&amp;T's website indicated that it was based on online web coverage noting that there was no coverage gap. Secondly, they also made a determination that Patrick Road would equally fill the gap in wireless coverage as provided by the Summit Drive facility. And then lastly, they determined that the proposed facility would not result in the least visually obtrusive site because it is visible to Summit Drive private neighborhood. So with that, here we are on appeal by the CDI's council representing the applicant here. Your board has the opportunity to consider the jurisdiction, whether you'd like to take jurisdiction pursuant to County Code eighteen-ten-three-forty-C. I'm going to focus on item one, where I believe there were errors on the part of the planning commission. So as noted, the appellant's assertion that there was an error abusive discretion on the part of the planning commission zoning administrator or other officer is the grounds for taking it on appeal. So the following slides, I believe crystallize the analysis that the zoning administrator's determinations and show that there were errors by the planning commission and denial of the project that warrants your board to take jurisdiction. So here we are. I'm going to try to cut to the chase on this. So with regard to the first item that there's no gap in coverage, I just want to point out the red ellipse is the gap in coverage that AT&amp;T is proposing to fill. You'll notice in the legend that the color-coded legend indicates the green is reliable indoor service and yellow is reliable transit in transit. So if you're driving in a car and the blue is reliable outdoor coverage. So as you can see, there's a gap in coverage with the exception of a tiny little area of reliable outdoor coverage along the northern part of Patrick Road. And secondly, regarding the wireless coverage at a hundred and fifty feet in height, the planning commission made the assertion that the Patrick Road site, which is located on the right-hand side of your slide. And again, that ellipse is the area that the applicant is proposing to fill the wireless gap. So that area on the Patrick Road, you can see that with the, a proposed one hundred and fifty-foot facility at the Patrick Road site, you can see reliable indoor service on the northern portion of the gap in coverage. That's mostly in the Summit Drive neighborhood. And when you look at the left-hand picture for the proposed site on Summit Drive, you can see that the lion's share of this area is filled with reliable indoor service area coverage. And this, the intent is to cover from Alba Road down to Conifer Lane toward the south end of that red ellipse. So thus, the planning commission aired in finding that Patrick Road is a co-location alternative capable of providing equal coverage. As you can see, it's fairly obvious that Patrick Road doesn't provide equal coverage at a hundred and fifty feet. In fact, the RF engineer indicated that to achieve equal coverage, the Patrick Road facility would have to be approximately two hundred and ten feet in height to achieve similar coverage as a hundred and fifty feet at the Summit Drive facility. And then lastly, with regard to visual impact analysis, these are detailed photo comparisons of visual impacts to public and private visual resource impacts between the proposed project and the Patrick Road alternative site evaluated the request of the planning commission. So I'm going to slow down here and we're going to go through this, starting with the two image on the upper right. So the left image on the upper right is the views from Empire Grade or Protected roadway under the general plan under our Resource Protection Regulations, looking toward the location of the summit facility. As you can see, there's no public views of the proposed Summit Drive facility. And on the right-hand image of the upper right image, if you'll see, you can see there's four pictures in or three pictures in there. On the lower right-hand image, you can see a tiny little white line. That's the existing hundred and fifty-foot scaffold on Patrick Road. So that's what exists now as seen from Empire Grade Road. And then in the upper two images on the right-hand side, that is the two hundred and ten-foot height facility that would be required to fill the gap and is obviously would be visible from Empire Grade Road. So again, this demonstrates that the Summit Drive project would have no visual, public visual impacts to Empire Greater Road, for that matter, for any roadway. Whereas the alternative site on Patrick Road would have visual impacts to a protected roadway. And so now looking. So then I just want to reiterate that it's fair to say that Summit Drive would be the superior technically feasible alternative location with less visual and other resource impacts in terms of overall height and thus visual impacts. And so in denying the project based on generalized aesthetic impacts to the private neighborhood of Summit Drive, rather than identified significant impacts to designated visual resources mapped in the general plan as and as required by the wireless findings enumerated in the county code that are the basis for the project approval or denial, the planning commission made an error finding that the proposed facility was not located on the least visually obtrusive site. So that takes us to the staff recommendation. So staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of the appeal on this application, two-two-one-zero-four-nine, that you take jurisdiction of the appeal and schedule a de novo public hearing on June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, and then direct the clerk of the board to provide written notice as required by the county code section eighteen-ten-three-forty-E-one, at least twenty-one days in advance of the public hearing and direct the community development and infrastructure staff to provide additional notice as required by eighteen-ten-one-seventeen-A, at least ten calendar days prior to the hearing. And I said a few last comments following that recommendation that your board, as you can see, I'm recommending you take jurisdiction. However, you have alternatives, you could potentially remand the item back to the planning commission for reconsideration of new evidence if you feel that's appropriate. And now I'm reading directly from our ordinance under eighteen-ten-three-forty-D, I believe. In the event of such a referral, the board may require a report back to the board for review by the board or provide that the planning commission's decision on reconsideration shall be final, subject to appeal to the board without be by the previous appellant, as in the case of an original decision, at which time the board shall decide whether to take jurisdiction for further review, any such appeal. And staff, as staff, I'm not recommending that your board refer this remand this back to the planning commission. In all honesty, I think we'll go back to the planning commission and we'll be back on a jurisdictional appeal before your board and then back to hearing an appeal. I would prefer that your board take the item and then we hear it as a de novo hearing and then make the decision final. And then lastly, I read all this into for all wireless projects, I read the following statement. Under federal law, local governments have the authority to regulate the placement, construction and modification of wireless communication facilities, subject to certain limitations. Among those limitations, a local government's regulations may not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services and may not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting provision of personal wireless services. Any denial of an application to place, construct or modify a wireless communication facility must be based on substantial evidence contained in a written record. Notably, any such denial can be based on environmental or health impacts of the wireless facility. Specifically, federal law provides that a local government may not regulate the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that wireless, that such facilities comply with the commission's regulations concerning such emissions. FCC has regulatory jurisdiction over RF emissions, including impacts of radio frequency radiation from cell phones. And that concludes my presentation unless you have questions. I know we're in a hurry to get on to the next item.
We're going to hold the question. So after then, we'll now hear from the applicant.
All right. Good morning, honorable supervisors. Thank you for your time this morning. I'd also like to thank Sheila and staff for all their hard work and excellent work preparing the staff report and materials and all the hearings that we've held on this tower or facility. I want to start by briefly discussing the standard of review applicable to this request that the board take jurisdiction of the appeal. In relevant part, under your county code, our burden is to demonstrate based on our appeal documents and the record that a prima facia showing exists that the planning commission made an error or abuse of discretion or that their denial of the facility is not supported by the facts presented before the commission or that some other factor renders the denial unjustified or inappropriate. Here, the evidence in support of our appeal is more than sufficient to make each of these findings. This evidence is found in the extensive written materials and technical data submitted in support of our application and appeal. The zoning administrator's original approval of the facility and substantial evidence they relied on in their findings. And the consistent recommendations by county staff in multiple staff reports supported by evidence in the record that the county is directed by the county code and federal law to approve the facility. Here, there has been a clear legal error that would support the board taking jurisdiction. The commission's denial of the facility violated the Federal Wireless Telecommunications Act, the TCA, and was contrary to the directives of the county code. The denial was not based on substantial evidence required for the county to deny the facility under the, under federal law. So there's both a legal and a factual evidentiary basis to grant jurisdiction to hear our appeal. On the other hand, if the commission's denial were upheld, this would amount to an unlawful prohibition of the provision of wireless services under the TCA. The TCA was adopted in nineteen ninety-six in recognition that wireless towers are controversial and almost always opposed by adjacent residents. But they are essential to meet the modern communications needs, including the emergency communications needs of the broader community they serve. The TCA thus limits local agencies' ability to deny controversial wireless towers in situations like this one. Under Ninth Circuit case law, a county has the unlawful effect of prohibiting wireless services where that county denies an application where, one, a service provider has identified a significant gap in their service coverage. And two, the manner in which the service provider proposes to close that gap is the least intrusive means of closing that gap available. Both of these showings have been made extensively by the applicant team. First, AT&amp;T has identified a significant gap in service coverage as defined under both federal law and the county code. Here, this gap in coverage is clear based on the industry standard proprietary tools available. A radio frequency statement prepared by AT&amp;T's RF engineer, a professional, detailed propagation maps demonstrating a lack of sufficient coverage in the gap area, as well as detailed drive test data. Federal courts consistently recognize AT&amp;T's more accurate proprietary data as the appropriate method to demonstrate gaps in coverage. They reject the use of inaccurate marketing maps like those relied on the commission in their denial as a basis to refute a gap in coverage. Federal law is also highly deferential to wireless carriers and the determination whether a significant gap exists and how they propose to close it. As a twenty-eighteen FCC order noted, an effective prohibition can occur not only where a service provider is unable to provide existing service in a new area, but also where they are materially inhibited from improving existing services. FCC directives in case law also make clear that a local government may not require the deployment of a specific technology to close a gap in coverage. It boils down to the carrier gets to decide which technology it wants to provide to close a gap in service. Echoing this in twenty-twenty-three, the county code was extensively updated to mirror federal law and the significant discretion that it gives wireless carriers in determining whether a gap exists. And the county code defines a significant gap as a gap in a wireless provider's own wireless services that is significant as certified by the wireless carrier, and that's very important, as certified by the wireless carrier. That's as the record reflects and as accurately communicated in the staff report. The commission committed a clear legal error when it substituted its judgment based on inaccurate high-level mapping from AT&amp;T's website, which includes disclaimers on the map itself, that it does not show all gaps in coverage in place of AT&amp;T's industry standard and accepted certification that a significant gap exists. I'm confident that a court would conclude that this was a legal error. Moving on to the second finding, AT&amp;T's comprehensive alternatives analysis confirms that there are no suitable technically feasible and less intrusive alternatives available. AT&amp;T examined all available property to locate an alternative facility in the vicinity. It found five potential sites. It performed a comprehensive review of all five of those sites and determined that none of those sites feasibly closed the gap. Patrick Road is not a feasible alternative. AT&amp;T already confirmed this independently in twenty-twenty before it entered an arrangement with CTI, and they've done so again extensively in these proceedings. As reflected in the applicant's materials, a centerline height of two hundred and ten feet would be required at Patrick Road to close the significant gap in coverage. And this would be necessary to close coverage south down Empire Grade where all those residences are that you saw on the maps that Sheila showed earlier. And this would be necessary to close coverage south down Empire Grade, where all those residences are that you saw in the maps that Sheila showed earlier. Providing coverage in the southern area is therefore a key objective of AT&amp;T in closing its gap in coverage. And the county is obligated to give deference to AT&amp;T in meeting this coverage goal. From a pure feasibility standpoint, it's unclear a two hundred and ten foot facility could even be constructed at Patrick Road. It would likely need to be an uncamouflaged guide tower that would be highly visible from Empire Grade, a protected scenic roadway. And that facility would have to undergo the same discretionary approval process for a height exception that this facility is going through. And you couldn't make the findings to approve a height exception at Patrick Road because a less obtrusive alternative exists at this site that we're proposing. Therefore, based on the record before us, the county cannot deny the facility. The commission's denial decision independently was not supported by substantial evidence. Which is another basis to find an error and grant jurisdiction to hear this appeal. Under the TCA, as Sheila mentioned, denial of a proposed wireless facility must be in writing and based on substantial evidence. Here, there was a lack of substantial evidence. The commission's findings for denial were based, one, on the inaccurate marketing maps that I referenced before. And also the generalized concerns by neighbors of impacts on their private views and property values. These generalized expressions do not amount to substantial evidence under federal case law. Rights to private views are similarly not recognized under state law. Although adjacent residents have voiced opposition to the facility, it has the support of the Rural Bonny Doon Association. Cal Fire and FirstNet have indicated support for the facility and locating emergency communications there. And I also understand that the head of IT for the county has indicated, visited the site and indicated that they could, could locate county emergency communications at the facility. As the staff report accurately recognizes, the Summit Drive facility would be the superior technically feasible alternative location with less visible. And or resource impacts. It is the only feasible and indeed the superior facility to close AT&amp;T's significant gap in coverage. To conclude, we request that the board take jurisdiction of this appeal and correct a clear and reversible error by the commission.
Thank you. Now we will hear from the opposition group. If there's someone that's a representative.
Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Tim Richards. I'm here on behalf of Bonny Doon residents for responsible cell coverage. I co-founded this grassroots group to work on our region's connectivity needs without harming the community or burdening taxpayers. Our group originally appealed the decision of the zoning administrator to the planning commission. The planning commission rightfully granted our appeal and denied the application. We urge you to deny jurisdiction of the CTI appeal. And remand the matter to the planning commission to strengthen their findings for denial. Like many of our neighbors, we moved to Bonny Doon for a peaceful rural community, a place to raise our family close to nature. That's why we also joined the Rural Bonny Doon Association to help protect the unique character and quality of life in this special place. Let me be clear. We support improved cell coverage in Bonny Doon. And we oppose the unnecessary CTI towers project at one eighty-six Summit Drive. This would, this would place a one hundred and sixty foot tower in the heart of a residential neighborhood that already has strong cell coverage. Point number one, local authority and legal standards. CTI claims that federal law requires you to approve this tower. This is simply not true. The telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six preserves your authority to regulate the placement, aesthetics and community impacts of wireless facilities. As long as the decisions aren't based on health impacts and don't amount to a total prohibition of service. However, significant and unnecessary aesthetic impacts are valid legal grounds for denial. The US Supreme Court and the Ninth Circuit have both upheld this in cases like T-Mobile South LLC versus City of Roswell and Metro PCS versus San Francisco. See section three of our supplemental evidence for detailed case law citations. The county is well within its rights to deny this project based on substantial community and visual impact. Which the planning commission rightly did based upon the many pieces of written and photographic evidence that we submitted. Point number two, substantial evidence, no coverage gap. CTI's argument depends on there being a supposed coverage gap. But independent data tells a different story. We provided evidence to the planning commission that there is no gap in coverage. Your staff report states this, this evidence was insufficient. However, we discovered the FCC's national broadband map. The same data that AT&amp;T submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission to justify removing landlines. Which shows there is no coverage gap. Please see section one of our supplemental evidence to review this map. This map shows on page one, one hundred percent mobile broadband coverage from AT&amp;T. With both four G LTE and five G in the area that this tower would serve. AT&amp;T's own filings publicly confirm this. When they want to remove landlines in our area, they say there's no coverage. They say there is coverage. However, when they want a new tower, suddenly there's not. This contradiction undermines their credibility. The independent third party data from the federal agency that governs this issue says there's no coverage gap. Without a coverage gap, the height exemption cannot be granted and this project must be denied. Point three, modern alternatives, satellite and distributed antenna systems. CTI also ignores modern alternatives like satellite cell service, which is already working in Bonny Doon. Please see section two of our supplemental evidence for details on existing alternatives. As of today, AT&amp;T customers with iPhone fourteen or newer can access satellite coverage anywhere with a clear sky. This is not hypothetical. It's active right now. In fact, AT&amp;T FirstNet service with Starlink is available now with the mini, the micro CRD product that's sold by FirstNet. AT&amp;T is also partnering with AST Space Mobile and FirstNet to bring direct to saddle, direct to cell satellite service to residents and first responders. Satellite coverage counts as cell coverage and anywhere in Bonny Doon that can see the sky is covered. Our summit burned in the twenty twenty CZU wildfires, which means it has a full view of the sky and thus has coverage. In wildfire prone areas like ours, satellites are more reliable than terrestrial towers, which can and have failed. As seen the Pacific, the Pacific Palisades wildfires this January. When first responders use satellite coverage after the cell towers burned. We, along with the RBDA, support distributed antenna systems or DAS. Which can extend coverage throughout our entire mountainous region, using small nodes on telephone poles along our existing fiber optic networks. This distributed small cell approach obviates the need for new mega tower infrastructure that has limited line of sight in our forested and mountainous region. Meaning that even dozens of mega towers could not provide coverage to our entire region. These options are viable, technically feasible and visually superior, meeting the county cross, the county coast criteria for alternatives. We'll be participating in an alternatives forum organized by the RBDA that brings together key stakeholders in our community. To find viable alternative solutions to this tower. Point four, site selection, not the least intrusive means. County code requires that new towers be placed in the least visually intrusive location. And the co-location on existing towers be prioritized unless proven technically infeasible. But CTI has not provided the required denial letter from the landowner of the existing one hundred and fifty foot tower at one twenty-five Patrick Road. That tower located at the edge of our neighborhood is far less intrusive than a brand new one at one eighty-six Summit Drive. The staff report claims that raising the height of the Patrick Road Tower would be more visually intrusive. But that logic is backwards because it's already visible for Empire Grade. Adding height there would have far less impact than placing a brand new one hundred and sixty foot tower in the center of our neighborhood, dominating views for more than a dozen homes. There's also a new one hundred and fifty foot cell tower site under negotiation right now by the county at the McDermott Fire Station. Which would fill real gaps in underserved areas, serve more residents overall. And be located away from homes along a highly trafficked main road intersection. Proving the CTI tower now risks duplicating infrastructure and creating needless impacts on landowners. Why rush and risk these deleterious outcomes? This pending tower at McDermott Fire Station is new evidence that needs to be considered by the county. Because the CTI tower is not the least visually intrusive option, the height exemption cannot be granted and the project must be denied. Point five, aesthetics and community character, legal grounds for denial. CTI argues that denial can't be based on private views, but that misrepresents the law. The Ninth Circuit and other federal courts have affirmed that aesthetic harm to community character and public view sheds, as well as private view sheds, is a legitimate basis for denial. Again, see section three for detailed case law citations. This isn't about one neighborhood's backyard. It's about protecting zoning laws the county created to preserve the public interest and rural identity of Bonny Doon. Point six, procedural integrity, strengthen the denial with new evidence. The planning commission made the right call, but their findings could be stronger. To protect the county from litigation risk, we urge you to not take jurisdiction. But instead remand the matter to the planning commission to adopt detailed findings that reference the FCC data. The available alternative technologies and the two viable less intrusive sites now on the table. You have this authority under county code eighteen dot ten, three, forty, section D subsection two, which Sheila read previously. Point seven, conclusion, protect Bonny Doon's future. Supervisors, this decision is about more than just one tower. It's about our right to shape our future, protect our landscapes and embrace modern responsible solutions. Bonny Doon, Bonny Doon residents for responsible cell coverage does not oppose better connectivity. We welcome it when it's done thoughtfully and not imposed carelessly. We urge you to deny jurisdiction of the CTI appeal. Remand the matter to the planning commission to strengthen their findings for denial. And send a clear message, Bonny Doon's future will not be sacrificed for an unnecessary outdated and intrusive tower. To reiterate, code states that in appropriate circumstances, without taking jurisdiction. The board may refer the matter back to the planning commission for reconsideration of new evidence or other considerations. Thank you so much for your time and for your stewardship of our community. Grateful for your presentation.
Thank you. Before we begin with public comment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this jurisdictional hearing because we have a scheduled item at ten forty-five. And we will take a two minute bio break.
The
Thank you. Before we begin with public comment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close this jurisdictional hearing because we have a scheduled item at ten forty-five and we will take a two-minute bio break.
City of County Council?
Yeah.
It's like, I guess we could begin. We have quorum. Right? We'd like to call this meeting to order for Bay Six, meeting of the County of Santa Cruz Flood and Water Conservation District, Zone Seven. Will the clerk please call roll call?
Certainly Director Koenig.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
With Directors Culbertson and Clark, absent. Director de Serpa, absent.
And Hernandez.
And Hernandez.
Director Hernandez.
Here.
I'd like to see if staff has any late additions or deletions to the regular consent agenda today. No. See none, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. This is opportunity for members to speak, the public to speak to us regarding this item. Items not on the agenda, items on consent agenda, or if you'd like to speak to us regarding an item on the regular agenda. Please note that you'll be given two minutes to speak. See none in public, anyone online? Yes. I see no speakers online, Chair. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for. Right? We'd like to call this meeting to order for Bay Six, meeting of the County of Santa Cruz Flood and Water Conservation District, Zone Seven. Will the clerk please call roll call?
Certainly Director Koenig.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
With Directors Culbertson and Clark, absent. Director de Serpa, absent.
And Hernandez.
And Hernandez.
Director Hernandez.
Here.
I'd like to see if staff has any late additions or deletions to the regular consent agenda today. No. See none, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. This is opportunity for members to speak, the public to speak to us regarding this item. Items not on the agenda, items on consent agenda, or if you'd like to speak to us regarding an item on the regular agenda. Please note that you'll be given two minutes to speak. See none in public, anyone online? Yes.
I see no speakers online, Chair.
Okay. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for.
I'm looking at that.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and then second from Supervisor Koenig. Madam Clerk, if we could take a roll call?
Director Martinez.
Hi.
Koenig.
Hi.
Cummings.
Hi.
Hernandez.
Hi. Motion passes. Next item is number seven. Hold a public hearing on the Zone Seven assessment rates for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Hear objections, protests, or if any, take related actions. I'll turn it over to staff for presentation.
Thank you, Chair and Directors. My name is Rodney Trujillo, I'm the Senior Civil. Oh, oh, sorry. Thank you, Chair and Directors. My name is Rodney Trujillo. I'm the Senior Civil Engineer for Zone Seven Flood Control and Water Conservation District. The item before you is as described for public hearing on the Zone Seven assessment rates. I'd like to just share with you that on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, the board approved a resolution confirming the increase in assessments. As a reminder, the increase in assessments is based on the annual C P I of two point eight percent. That is the extent of the increases. On March twenty-fifth, the board set today as the public hearing to hear any comments from the public on the assessment rate report for Zone Seven. The recommended actions this morning are to open the public hearing and hear objections and protests, if any, to the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six assessment rate report for Zone Seven and close the public hearing. Upon conclusion of the hearing, consider adoption of the attached resolution confirming the written report on assessment rates for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
And that's all, I guess, if there's comments or questions. I'll now turn it over to the public to see if anyone wishes to speak on this item.
Before we move to public comment, I believe Supervisor, no, okay. Okay, never mind.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. I do not oppose this rate increase, but I do request that the boundaries of Zone Seven be described publicly. That is not found in any of the documentation and is not being provided here. Can you please give a description of the boundaries of Zone Seven for benefit of the public? Thank you.
Anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
I'll now turn it over to the Board of Directors, see if anyone has questions or would like to entertain a motion.
Yeah, I was just wondering if maybe you could provide that description of Zone Seven. Especially since we have new board members, some folk cannot be aware of what the boundaries of that area.
Yeah, it's predominantly in Paharo. The, the, you have a good description of the limits.
We do have it posted on our website and it is generally the Paharo River watershed. I don't have.
So I think it's, it follows through West Beach all the way up and then it goes one block over to West Lake on, in Watsonville and then it goes through there to back through East Beach. So all the houses close to the levee, then it goes up. Yeah, West Beach and then once you get to the bridge area, it covers the, the farmlands on the left side of West Beach going towards the fairgrounds and then it comes back through college or hole and it comes back and goes all the way to the river. Towards Hollister, wrapping Sabatito County.
Thank you very much Supervisor Hernandez. That was a very competent description.
That concludes my comments and if there's a need for a motion, I'm happy to move the recommended actions.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion from Supervisor Cummings and a second from Supervisor Koenig, if we could take roll call.
Noting for the record that Director de Serpa has joined the meeting and is present for this vote.
Yes.
Director Koenig.
Hi.
Martinez.
Hi.
Cummings.
Hi.
De Serpa.
Hi.
And Hernandez.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously.
Next agenda item is number eight, approve the twenty twenty-five proposed budget for Zone Seven Flood Control Water Conservation District. And I'll bring it to staff for presentation.
All right, thank you, Chair and Directors. The item before you is proposed budget. The final budget will be part of the budget considerations at the June tenth County Board of Supervisors meeting. A little bit of history on this item. On December sixth, twenty twenty-two, your board approved a cost sharing agreement with PerfMA, wherein PerfMA would assume responsibility for maintenance and infrastructure improvements within the district. This agreement called for the transfer of any fund balance retained by the district as well as ninety-six percent of ongoing district assessment revenues. And on October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, your board approved a maintenance agreement with the district and PerfMA for district drainage operations to provide maintenance surfaces to PerfMA for the County of Santa Cruz side of the Paharo River Flood Control System. The proposed budget includes anticipated revenue and expenses associated with the approved maintenance agreement and the transfer of funds to PerfMA for the cost sharing agreement. The budget is projecting a total revenue and expenses of approximately four point eight million dollars for the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. For the district's agreement with PerfMA, the budget includes a transfer of ninety-six percent of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six projected assessment revenues estimated at two point four million dollars as well as revenues related to the FEMA reimbursements for the twenty twenty-three storm events and outstanding grant receivables with an estimated total of one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for a total of four million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars, seven hundred, I'm sorry, four million, one hundred and forty, seven hundred and eight dollars estimated to be transferred to PerfMA this fiscal year. The recommended action this morning is to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six proposed budget for Zone Seven Flood Control and Water Conservation District. So I have.
Thank you. And I'll turn to the public, see if anyone would like to address us on this item. See none, anyone online?
We have no speakers online.
I'll bring it back to the board for any, any questions or to entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Question.
Regarding the FEMA reimbursement for the twenty twenty-three storms and the amount of one point seven, I think you said something, did, has that been received on behalf of the flood?
No, it has not been received.
No, so that's one of the ones we're still potentially waiting on.
Yeah, we're in the, in the midst of, of still trying to get that money from FEMA.
Okay, so even though it's not received yet, in the event that it's received, we're approving today the transfer of that back to PerfMA then.
It will not be transferred to PerfMA until we receive it.
Got it, okay, thank you. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor de Serpa and then a second from Supervisor Koenig, if you can take roll call.
Director Cummings.
Hi.
Martinez.
Hi.
Koenig.
Hi.
De Serpa.
Hi.
And Hernandez.
Hi. Motion passes unanimously.
And that concludes our Zone Seven meeting, meetings adjourned. We'll continue with the regular agenda. Item number seven. We had just concluded three of the presentations and we will now open it to the public. Anyone wishes to address us on this issue? Whenever you're ready.
Okay, sorry.
Good morning, my name is Julie Cahill. I live immediately south of the proposed park property. Good morning, I just wanted to come here and share that the, there's new information that's come about the original permit, which legally transferred to C T I when they purchased in twenty sixteen and lays out conditions they're required to meet before any new permits can be considered. Please see your handout for additional codes and evidence. Condition one states all landscaping shall conform to submitted drawings by Royal Adel. All landscaping must be permanently maintained. C T Is failed to maintain any of their property, replace any of their burned fence or screening that was destroyed in the storm and allowed the site to become overgrown with six foot plus branch broom, a known fire hazard. Condition seven, by accepting this use permit agrees not to construct any future additions to the facility with the exception of those that would reduce the number, height or area of the existing antenna. All antenna towers, buildings not in use shall be promptly removed from the site. Unfortunately, C T I has failed with this as well, taking over six years to remove an obsolete satellite dish. They've yet to remove a guided tower, they admitted is unusable due to low height and antiquated technology at the last meeting and a large metal base remains. They're now proposing a hundred and fifty-foot tower that clearly adds to the facility in direct violation of the permit. The county has authority and obligation to revoke the original use permit according to County Code and condition eight of their permit, which states any violation to the conditions of this use permit shall be grounds for revocation. We ask you to pull the planning commission's decision, move to remove the, move to revoke the original permit or at a minimum send this back for new evidence review. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, my name is still James Yueng Women, I'd like to comment on the what I just heard from all sides. So a gentleman named Herman G. Schwarm, nineteen fifteen to two thousand and five, was one of over sixteen hundred Nazi scientists brought over in Operation Paperclip. In nineteen fifty-two, he developed a false standard based on thermal effects of non-ionizing radiation based on a factor of ten million, when a number of six X bacteria, it's off by one point six six million. Only one of two identical phones, these were the best frequency weapons I could find in late two thousand and twenty-three, they're made in Helsinki, they're Motorola phones. You know, one of the reasons I would never buy an Apple product. You know, the first Apple home computer, computer was produced July seventeen seventy-six, it sold for six hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. Now, you know, that information was readily available on Google, they like to warn us, why did Steve Jobs not allow this equipment next to his kids? Because of how dangerous it is. You know, the, okay. Previous President Clinton in nineteen ninety-six passed the F six C, it's seven oh two, seven oh four, where the only complaint would be how it looked. This is what we have people talking about and they're recommending small cell, small cell devices. People have no idea how harmful this is, particularly to women. Women are born with all of their eggs at birth and they have their laptop, their phone in their pocket. It's really harmful. I mean, I don't pray very often, but when I see people with phones next to their bodies or wearing earbuds, people don't understand how crazy this technology is. So I wish I was hearing different stuff from supposed professionals talking about safety and whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Andy Fox, I live at eighty-eight Patrick. And this is about the C T R, C T I application. There is no significant practical coverage gap in Summit. We've all got perfectly reasonable working cell phones. The F C C coverage maps and A T and T's own admittedly marketing coverage maps both indicate good coverage in the area in question. Please refer to the additional material that Tim gave you showing those maps. Regarding alternative technology, cell towers are restricted by line of sight and the signals are attenuated by forestry. Bonny Doon has many canyons and dense redwood forests, making the cell tower technology rather inappropriate. The recent low earth orbit satellite systems really do work, such as Starlink, and they can give us coverage as long as you can see the sky. One argument for the cell tower is the availability of the emergency first net service on the tower. But first net actually now sell micro C R D, which offers first net support and L T E cellphone support over Starlink. The use of satellites, which are immune to other base parameters and their portable base stations, make them better for emergency situations. We measured the Starlink speeds on Conifer Lane, which is on the edge of the coverage area. And we were able to measure a hundred and eighty megabits per second download and five megabits per second upload. And that's in an area with no cell coverage. So the satellite alternative really does seem very viable. There's also an alternative site, McDermott Fire Station, which is currently under review and would request that you, you investigate that. And finally, I'd respectfully submit that the proposed tower at one eighty-six Summit is simply a distraction from achieving the real goal of ubiquitous coverage in Bonny Doon for the financial gain of C T I. We should be focused on these alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, good morning, my name is Becky Steinbruner. I have lodged many of these similar appeals on this topic. And so I am very happy to hear that the planning commission for once sided with the residents in an area of a proposed application. I think you need to listen to your planning commission. And I think you need to support the very well reasoned arguments Mr. Richard made before you here today on behalf of the Bonny Doon residents. As has been said, satellite communication is the wave of the future and certainly is more reliable in major disasters. And I think that our counties should be looking at that much more. It is interesting to me as a holder of a landline telephone service with A T and T that first they say they can drop landlines because there's no gap in service. And now they're saying there is a gap in service. So pay particular attention to that claim, that dis, dis incongruent claim. And please listen to the people who have spoken here before you. And especially Mr. Richards and his residents, his community, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone online?
Yes, Chair, we have speakers online. Shanna, your microphone's available.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Shanna Kemble and I reside and I'm in the process of rebuilding a home at ninety-eight Summit Drive. I urge you today to uphold the planning commission's decision. As a retired firefighter after thirty-five years, I can tell you that the, the primary mode of communication in the fire service is always, will be radio communication. The alternatives that are available for cell coverage and the technology, as people have mentioned before, including Starlink and others, is important, but we should not be clouded by the fact that this is still a rural residential community and this tower is a matter of convenience because of the previous equipment was there. But it is not in the nature, I think the planning commission got it right. And I just urge the Board of Supervisors to not consider this case and move on to better technologies that are available right now. Thank you.
David, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is David Witkowski, I'm the founder and CEO of Oco Solutions. We are a engineering consulting firm based in Aptos. I'm coming to you today just as a resident of Santa Cruz County. The applicant has stated that under County Code Section thirteen dot ten dot six sixty B that the carrier may self-certify their significant gap, which they did in the evidentiary record proceeding up to the February twelfth hearing, they also provided drive test data. And at the same time, we note that the residents are claiming that there is good coverage in the area. I don't know that that residential test was done by a professional engineer that was certified in the state of California. But that would be something to consider. I think anecdotally, we can answer the question of whether or not there's good cell coverage in this area by remembering that in twenty twenty-one, when the county was attempting to place the sexual predator, Michael Cheek, in the Bonny Doon community, residents of Bonny Doon objected primarily for, well, for several reasons. But one of the reasons that they objected was because they said that there was no cell coverage in the area. Likewise, Sheriff Jim Hart, the former sheriff, stated in his opposition that both response times and poor cell coverage were his reasons for denying placement of Michael Cheek in the Bonny Doon community. So I think anecdotally, we can look at the fact that we know that there is poor coverage in this area, and the applicant's data actually supports that conclusion. Thank you very much for your time, and I recommend that you take jurisdiction of this case.
All in users six three four six, your microphone's now available. As a reminder, it's star six to mute or unmute yourself. Caller six three four six, your microphone is now available.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I'm Deborah Texara. I'm a retired geriatric social worker, longtime Bonny Doon resident. I live at one eight five Summit Drive, directly across the street from the proposed site at one eighty-six. I'm urging the Board of Supervisors to to uphold the planning commission's decision and not take jurisdiction and deny the CTI appeal. There are alternatives in this area. In this, in this neighborhood, we have good coverage, but Bonny Doon is very mountainous with, you know, mountains and valleys, and there's a lot of areas that don't get it. And this cell tower has limited line of sight. It's inappropriate. It will soon be obsolete. There are, are alternatives, Pico cells and the Starlink satellites are not intrusive and can be implemented right tucked right into those areas that don't have coverage. We do want our neighbors to have coverage. It's just this is not appropriate. Also environmentally, there's big weather here in Bonny Doon and lots of wind and rain and hot sun. And the microplastics on the cell tower will be broken down and go into our water supply. Yep. So, and I'm urging you to, to listen to what Tim said and to what Andy said and what our, you know, people in my community are saying. Thank you very much.
Chelsea, your microphone's now available.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you so much for hearing us this morning. I am Chelsea Richards, and I live at five three one Summit Drive. And I am a mother of two small children who on the daily walks my kids in a stroller right past the proposed site of this cell tower. And I stand with the Bonny Doon responsible cell coverage, urging you to please deny the CTI appeal. This tower is proposed right in the middle of a very active neighborhood. Every time I walk my children up to our community garden site, which is right across the road from this tower proposed site, I am seeing neighbors and walking their dogs and walking their children. Like, you can't go a day without seeing people on the streets here. It's just a very active, thriving community. And putting a cell tower right in the middle of this active community is just wrong. I couldn't agree more about the microplastics that Deborah just brought up. We have very severe weather up here. Like, we're Summit Drive, we're on the summit here. So we're getting eighty to a hundred mile hour winds in the winter time. And yeah, if you think of a plastic Christmas tree, the needles come off just in people's living rooms. So like, needles will be getting all over our environment and getting into our watershed. And I think that is just not, not right. Lastly, just wanting to speak to the fact that, like, this is very impactful for all the residents that have lived here and have been going through the process of this, like, time after time, showing up at the county building. And yeah, it's taking a big toll on our family and our neighbors. And we're all people who have tried to build, rebuild after the fire, and it's just been, been a lot on us. So thank you for your time.
We have no further speakers online, Chair.
Thank you. I'll now bring you back to the board for any comments, questions, or emotions.
Thank you. And I just want to start by thanking AT&amp;T, CTI, the representatives for being here and for members of the public for being here to speak on this item. This is something that I've been tracking since before becoming a county supervisor, just to better understand the situation that's been happening upon Summit as it pertains to this cell tower. I've been to the site multiple times, and I've been not only on the site, but in other adjacent areas and adjacent properties where I have Verizon and I've had coverage. And I know people who have had AT&amp;T and they've had coverage. And so I, I'm a little concerned with, and what I've been hearing as it pertains to there being, you know, this map that shows no coverage in this area. One thing I do want to point out is that with the, is that out of the three maps that we've seen now, two of which have been on AT&amp;T's website, one of which has provided us, has been provided by AT&amp;T, but out of, two out of those three maps show that there's coverage in this area. One of the maps is the wireless cover, coverage map, which is on the website. The other map is the map that was provided to us today, but I don't believe was provided to the planning commission, which is the FPPC National Broadband Map, which in the handout that was provided to us does show that there is coverage, and not only is the coverage, but AT&amp;T has been using this apparently to exit their carry of last resort obligations when going before the California Public Utilities Commission. And so for me, that is compelling in trying to, you know, address the concerns that are being raised around coverage, which, which is that it seems like while it's not perfect, there is coverage and not while somebody mentioned earlier that, you know, it's poor coverage. There's still coverage in this area. And so I actually, you know, have been going a little bit back and forth on how to address this, and a big part of me wants to say we should take no jurisdiction. But given that there's some evidence that was not considered by the planning commission, in particular, the maps that were provided to the FPPC and that were provided to the California Public Utilities Commission, I do think that sending this back to the planning commission with the substantial information would actually allow us to strengthen our arguments before us today to not take jurisdiction over this. I'll also say that there is a tower that is being proposed, that is being, that is under consideration by the county at the McDermott Fire Station, which has not been adequately analyzed to understand whether or not the the tower that goes in there can provide adequate service. And furthermore, I think there was some mention about the Patrick Road Tower, which couldn't, which is already there. It's already has a visual impact. So going up in height would not actually, would actually not cause any significant difference in the impacts that it already has today. And given that there is no letter saying that that resident would not be interested in potentially working with AT&amp;T or other cell providers, I think that that is an alternative that needs further exploration. Again, as was mentioned earlier, AT&amp;T does have other alternative forms of technology that can be deployed in the area. There's satellites, cellular connectivity available protecting in Bonny Doon is being built out further for first net and AT&amp;T's products for first responders. Starlink coverage, as was mentioned before, is already available and working in Bonny Doon. And the distributed antenna system, I think, is something that should be considered and is a technology that's available from AT&amp;T and Verizon. So I think that, you know, in trying to minimize the most impacts on our residents and provide coverage, it's really critical that we fully completely analyze all the alternatives available to us, all the other sites that are available to us. And for this reason, I'm going to move that the board take jurisdiction of the appeal and refer this item back to the planning commission for reconsideration, incorporating the new evidence provided to us by the Bonny Doon residents. And that the condition, the commission's decision will be final and subject to a new appeal under S, under SCC, SCCC, eighteen dot one zero dot three four zero D two. And I'll just, oh, a question for clarification as well. So if the planning, if this is sent back to the planning commission, does it have to, it can be appealed back to, under county code, it can be appealed back to the, the board?
Yes.
Okay. And so out of respect for the residents, out of respect for the new information, I think that this is appropriate direction for us to move in. Again, I would be more inclined to take no jurisdiction, but I think that this new information will actually help strengthen the county's argument and the argument that the residents are making. And so with that, I'm going to move that motion. And we can continue to have further discussion after a second's been made.
Any other comments or questions?
Sure, just a point of order. If we're remanding it back to the planning commission, do we need to take jurisdiction at this time?
The county code is written in a confusing manner. You're essentially acting, so you're taking jurisdiction and referring it back to the, the planning commission with direction to do something. So it's, it's, it's a matter of semantics. But we need a second on the motion if you want to continue debate.
Oh, okay. I'll second the motion. You know, I will say I live in an area, in the Aptos area, where we have very poor cell coverage. So if, if this tower is not approved in Bonny Doon, please consider placing it in Aptos. We have no cellphone coverage in the area that I live. We were just all, many of us at a, a big conference on economic development down in the sea, seascape area. And there is no coverage at the seascape golf course. It's very poor. We need help. So thank you for considering that. The other thing I'll say is yesterday we did have a meeting with some of the residents. And during that meeting, the residents, we were on Zoom, they froze. So I don't, I, it's hard for me to believe that they have adequate coverage there when you lost power. Okay. Got it. Okay. Well, that makes, that makes better sense. Thank you. But anyway, I'll second the motion.
Superser.
Sure, sure. Just to comment, I, I'm not going to support the motion. I believe there, there is a technical requirement that the maps that we reference are ones provided by the applicant and, and as was pointed out to us by county council, the ones that the other maps referenced sort of have a disclaimer that they're not actually, you know, a hundred percent accurate representation of the service levels. I also just want to respond to what Supervisor DeCerpa just said. You're less likely to see a new tower in Aptos if we do not take jurisdiction of this decision, precisely because it demonstrates that both our planning commission and our board are going to add costs anytime an application for a new tower comes in. We're basically, I mean, I fully expect that if we send this back to the planning commission, they'll do the same thing they did last time and reject the application. That will leave the applicant no choice but to sue under what they believe are their federal rights. And that will simply, if, if they choose to proceed with the, the application at all. And that will absolutely give them cold feet about applying for any additional towers in the county if we're adding that much cost anytime anyone tries to do business. And so
it absolutely is. Excuse me.
Yeah.
We, we really want to, the legislative body really needs to not have people shouting out from the crowd. It disturbs and disrupts the proceedings. So respectfully, we'd ask folks to please, if you have an issue, come up to one of us at the break and ask us a question, but please do not shout out from the crowd. Thank you.
So in any case, that's my, my primary concern is that if we refuse to take jurisdiction and have a de novo hearing, as is as the recommended action state in our packet, that ultimately we just delay extending better coverage for, for our mountainous area. I'm certainly here, the, the notion that technology is improving. But the reality is the satellites are not always overhead and are not considered sufficient for, for providing someone access to a nine one one call. So thanks.
Supervisor Martinez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentations today. And it's been really informative. And I would like to, if it's appropriate, can I call a representative from AT&amp;T up to answer a question that I have?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, the, my district has a lot of concerns around the carrier of last resort application to, to remove that. And we have heard from AT&amp;T that there's a lot of, that there's plenty of coverage and that kind of thing. And so when I see that there's differences in maps, you know, one that sort of supports removing of copper lines in the future, and then one that talks about, you know, not enough adequate coverage currently, so we need new, you know, towers. It, it just, it makes me wonder kind of what, what your long-term plan is for these areas? And how does this tower support your long-term plans, you know, both for copper lines or for, you know, further cell coverage down, down the way? So it sounds like there's somebody on the call who can help answer the question.
Young, your mic should be available if you can mute or unmute yourself.
Yes, hi. This is Young Zhang with AT&amp;T. I'm a Associate Director for the RAN. I am responsible for the wireless network in Santa Cruz. So a couple of things I think I did here, I just want to set the I, I think a couple of things, there, there was some misspoken facts related to the wireless network. And I, I do want to put some factual facts on the table. One is that I believe there was one statement that said the Starlink is used by the emergency services. Currently, the AT&amp;T uses Starlink to have the connectivity for the first net radios. So if the first net users are using the AT&amp;T first net, Starlink by itself will not give that connectivity. We have to have a AT&amp;T band fourteen or some other frequency band to provide that reliable connectivity. I, I think also second point that I've heard was the AST, the satellite. Yes, AT&amp;T is working with the AST. However, there is no definite timeline as when that service will be provided. And this is some service that has not been provided. So I, I don't want to make too much assumptions because we don't know how reliable the first net or the first responder will be able to use satellite communication. And when they're inside the home, for example, or in the foliage, in the trees. As you know, the, you know, satellite communications like Starlink, they do work on the line of sight. And trees will have some bearings on attenuating the signal levels. So that, you know, that's kind of some of the facts I did want to lay out. And lastly, I think, yeah, the, the, related to the overall plans. Yes, we do have a plans, you know, for the wireless network. Now, if somebody asked me, can, you know, i- if we have a plan right now, i- is that going to be good forever? And the answer is going to be no. Just like today, we don't know exactly where our site's going to be. And that's a big problem for us to plan. And, you know, things like, i- if we don't get this approved, some of the other sites that we had planned may have to be moved. Or we have to build another site because it doesn't provide adequate coverage or contiguous coverage. So there, there's a lot of factors that goes in. And frankly, I don't know how to answer your question at this moment because there is a lot of uncertainties. Hope that helps.
Yeah. Would you be able to speak just any, any little bit about the differences in maps that we're seeing? You know, there's one map submitted for the FCC National Broadband Plan, and then there are other maps submitted related to this particular tower. I guess that's, that's where my question really lies.
Sure. Sure. I, I think, yeah. So I think there's a lot of confusion probably because, you know, depending on how the maps are created, communication is probability. At what probability will I have reliable communication? In that link budget calculations, there's a lot of factors that goes in. Do I have a ninety percent reliability? Do I have eighty percent, sixty-seven percent? What kind of standard? Do I have 80%, 67%? What kind of standard deviation do we have? Right? So there's a lot of factor that goes in to the to the propagation. Now also, you know, frequency also has an impact to what does it cover? Now, I'm looking at, and I think one of the gentlemen mentioned about the FCC map, and I did Google it. And I'm looking at the FCC map right now. 4G LTE coverage, I think that was, looks like May 15, 2021. It states voice 90% edge probability, 50% cell loading. Based on that, you know, a lot of the Bonny Doon doesn't cover. Some part of, I'll say that some, you know, a lot of part of Bonny Doon is covered based on this map, but it's all based on probability.
Thank you. I appreciate those answers or your attempt to answer the question because, you know, I ask because the question of the maps is one of the questions at hand related to this appeal and whether or not we take jurisdiction over it. And what I'm hearing is, you know, there's not a lot of clarity, that there's a lot of probability involved, that there's not, there's not going to be a clear course if it went back to the Planning Commission. And similarly, it may put us in a very similar place to, you know, come back again to the board to with another appeal to take jurisdiction. And so, you know, I do want to say I'm sympathetic to the neighborhood concerns. I definitely hear you. And I'm also very sympathetic to rural residents who are desperate for increased communication and infrastructure projects that need to support that. And so, you know, today isn't about making a decision about whether or not this is the right place for a tower. That I have not made that decision. But I am really trying to understand, you know, what is the the best course of action for this particular project to get to some sort of ultimate outcome? And so just given that I'm, I'm, I'd like to hear from the other members of the board, kind of hear where they're at. And I'm wondering if the maker of the motion has any response.
So I do have a, I do have a question for the applicant. I'm not sure if it's app or staff. But during the hearing, I've heard three different figures for the height from 140 to 150 to 160. I know what the planning commission was at 150, but where were we at?
So the applicant made a request for 151 feet in height. The zoning administrator conditioned it to 140 feet in height, substantially filling the gap in coverage. And the I guess the prior appellate of the zoning administrator action, Tim Richard mentioned 160, that that's that's not what was approved.
All right. And then can we elaborate on, you know, what public safety is going to use this? Or they said they had interest with the county? What type of services would that be?
So I'll defer to the applicant on that. I do believe that we have a public service provider that has been will be provided access to the tower for public purposes. Go ahead, applicant.
CalFire had expressed interest in the site. We also walked the site with the county of Santa Cruz. It was Tammy Wiggles group. Their engineer was out at the site. They said it would be used for IT and emergency services.
Thank you. So, you know, my thoughts are that, you know, this is communications infrastructure. And I think especially in rural communities, we need infrastructure. And I think especially in these rural communities, that coverage is important, and especially with public safety in mind. Yeah, for me, I'd rather prefer that we don't, you know, toss the potato and just take jurisdiction at the board level is is my opinion. But, you know, that I think that's where I'm at. Supervisor Cummings has some comments.
Yeah, a couple. This on, yeah. A couple of points to make as it pertains to towers getting built. I just, I just want to point out that the Patrick Road Tower is something that my office worked very, we worked a long time with that tower owner to get that tower built. That tower came into significant conflict with county staff. There's a lot of pushback on getting that tower built, and we worked really closely with that individual to get that tower put back in Bonny Doon. And if it wasn't for our office really pushing on on planning staff, that tower wouldn't have gotten built. So I just want to point that out right now. We're not anti-tower here. Secondly, to the comments around towers getting built, there has been a temporary tower at McDermott Station since the CZU fires. And right now, the county is working with, working to put in a permanent tower at that McDermott Station. And that tower is something that has zero conflict with the Bonny Doon community. And what we're asking, and it has not been taken into consideration in terms of it being an alternative site for the services that AT&amp;T is is closing here for us today. And so, you know, being responsive to the residents of my district, especially those who are going to be negatively impacted, who do have cellphone service and they do have coverage, that's what we're we're talking about here today. And that's why, I mean, my preference, especially after now hearing about the probability of that there could be cell coverage within these areas coming from AT&amp;T, I'm even more inclined to not take jurisdiction over this and to support the planning commission's recommendation. But, you know, given the fact that there is some interest from the community to have this go back to the planning commission, and it's coming from the people who are going to be most impacted by this. That is why I'm recommending that we take this back to the planning commission and we incorporate this new information in because I think that it's going to strengthen our argument as we've just heard from AT&amp;T, you know, with the fact that there's probabilities and having been up in Bonny Doon at on summit and some of these people who have AT&amp;T have had cell service, that there are alternatives available, I think that we should be responsive to the residents who do want to improve communications. And at the same time, for both their private purposes and for emergency services, and at the same time, do it in such a way that's compatible with the community. And so, speaking on behalf of the residents of my district, I think that this is the appropriate path to take on this item.
Any other comments or questions?
Just some clarification from Supervisor Canning. And maybe you're not the right exact person, but it was my understanding that if we take jurisdiction, remand back to the planning commission, there could be more debate and more information that could come forward. If, and maybe a different decision would be rendered at the planning commission level or maybe not, and then it still could be appealed back to us. So is your concern that the the timeline and it in taking making extra barriers or hoops to jump through into the timeline would then make make the provider less likely to work in our county in the future? Like, what is exactly the concern? And maybe I didn't, I don't have it right. So so maybe some of our staff could approach and or Sheila, you could help me understand better. So can you?
Well, I mean, I'll just respond to the question. So yes, that is one concern. Also, as staff pointed out, you know, I think it's cleaner if we just act as the final decision maker on this. I'm just Supervisor Martinez's point. Doesn't mean that any of us have made up our minds if we simply choose to take jurisdiction and have a de novo hearing. And we're not voting on this project today. We're simply voting on whether or not to take jurisdiction. So. Yeah, I mean, I would actually, if it's all right with the chair, I'd like to offer a substitute motion that we, for the recommended actions, which include that we take jurisdiction and have a de novo hearing.
Second.
I have a question. Point of clarification. So any of the new materials, if this is heard as a de novo hearing, will those be incorporated into that hearing?
Yes. Yes, essentially, the de novo hearing means you're going to hear any evidence that's brought to you. It will not be conducted on the record that's been developed so far. So for example, the information that was provided to you today by the Bonny Doon folks, they will be able to bring that to the hearing. Whereas right now, what you're doing is trying to determine whether there's jurisdiction. This isn't even something that you should be looking at right now. Because it was not part of the record below. We're really focusing on this hearing on whether or not the planning commission aired. And if so, are you going to take jurisdiction? And what are you going to do with the jurisdiction that you've just taken?
So can we incorporate what was what's been provided to us today into the record so that when this comes back, it's a part of the agenda item?
No, they would need to come back and prevent, present whatever evidence to your board, which could include this packet on that day. It's a brand new do-over of the whole thing.
Okay. I'll just say that I I don't believe personally that the there was any error on the part of the planning commission. And my attempt today was to allow this to go back with additional information to the planning commission. So I just wanted to state that for the record because I do believe that they showed appropriate evidence that suggests that, I mean, one, it's just completely unclear. You know, if there if there are maps to say there's no covers, maps to say there is coverage, like which map are we supposed to believe? And, you know, I feel like this is being done at a convenience to try to put new technology into a neighborhood versus actually addressing some of the concerns because if a company is out saying to the public, we provide this service in these areas, come buy our product. They're going to the California Public Utilities Commission saying, hey, we could be removed from carry of last resort because, look, we have coverage. And then all of a sudden they're saying, well, actually, we don't have coverage, so let us put the cell tower in. I mean, that's, that's just bad faith, in my opinion. So I agree. I stand in in alignment with the planning commission's decision. And it sounds like with this motion that's before us, this will be coming back to us on June 10, at which time I'm really encouraging the residents of Bonny Doon to come out and invite others who can actually speak the truth to this matter. And so I'll end my comments there. Thank you.
There's any further comments?
Can I just have a point of order? So there was a first and a second. Do we need to extend a vote or does?
No, there's been a substitute motion provided. That substitute motion needs to be voted on first.
Okay.
So we have a motion from Supervisor Conig and a second from Supervisor Martinez. Can we take a vote?
Supervisor De Cerpa.
Aye.
Cummings?
No.
Conig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes with one dissenting note from Supervisor Cummings.
Chair, just a, just a scheduling housekeeping matter. So it's, it's a quarter to noon. The next item is probably going to take an hour, it could take an hour. You may want to break now for closed session and come back at 1 o'clock for item eight.
Yes.
And is now an okay time for me to make an announcement about item eight?
Yes, now's, now's a good time for that.
Okay. So I'm going to be recusing myself from item eight. One of the parties made a campaign donation when I was running for office and due to the Levine Act and an abundance of caution, I will be leaving the room and recusing on item eight. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now take a break and reconvene at 1 o'clock. We'll be in closed session. And there's nothing to report coming out of closed session. Thanks. So many agendas. I got like one agenda.
Board meeting, we have, I want to repeat one more time that we do have a jurisdictional hearing. The board will be deciding on whether to take jurisdiction of this matter based on criteria outlined in the staff report. We'll first hear a brief presentation from staff on the item. After the staff report, we'll hear from the appellant for no more than 10 minutes after the hearing, the after the hearing from the appellant, if there's an organized group proposing the application, we'll hear from them for no more than 10 minutes. After that, we'll take general public comments for two minutes per speaker. After that, we'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments, debate and a motion. So number eight, the next item on the agenda, number eight, hold a jurisdictional hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of appeal of an incompleteness, of the incompleteness determination on application 241450, a minor land, land division and coastal development permit to demolish an existing single family dwelling and construct three new dwellings on each of the newly formed parcels located at 22702 East Cliff Drive in Santa Cruz. And we have staff presentation. I'll turn it over to Nathan Macbeth.
Good afternoon, Nate Macbeth, Planning Department. Thank you for the intro. That, yeah, this is a jurisdictional hearing to consider whether the board should take jurisdiction of the planning commission's action to deny the appeal of planning staff's completeness determination of application 241450. This is the general vicinity of the project. It is on the south side of East Cliff Drive, just east of 26th Avenue in the Live Oak Planning Area. It's within the Pleasure Point Combining District. Parcel is roughly 16,000 square feet in size and developed with a single family dwelling. This is a little background of the project as we have it so far. And on November 25, the application was submitted through the planning department's E-Portal, it's electronic submittal process. On December 3, 2024, the app On December third, twenty twenty four, the applicant paid the requisite fees for that, for the review of that application, which is an important date because that initiates the thirty day review under the Permit Streamlining Act. On December twenty seventh, the planning department, planning staff deemed the application complete and provided the applicant with a list of, of items that needed to be provided in order to further process the application. On January ninth, an appeal was filed on the completeness determination, staff's completeness determination. And a hearing was scheduled before the planning commission on February twelfth. At the planning commission hearing, that application, the appeal was denied. On February twenty sixth, the planning commission's action was appealed to your, next slide please. As I mentioned, planning commission's determination was a denial of the applicant's appeal. They upheld the planning staff's determination that the application is incomplete based on the information contained in staff letter dated December twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and determined that the project was not deemed complete pursuant to Government Code Section six five nine four three. Next slide. So, as I mentioned, this is a jurisdictional hearing where your board's tasked with determining whether the specific criteria have been met to warrant scheduling of a de novo hearing to consider the merits of the planning commission's action denying the applicant's appeal and upholding the planning staff's determination that additional information is necessary to further process the application. Those criteria are outlined here, that there was an error or abuse and discretion of the planning commission, zoning administrator or other officer. It was a lack of fair or impartial hearing. The decision appealed is not supported by facts. There was a significant new information relevant to the decision. But there was an error, abusive discretion, some other factor rendering the action by the planning commission unjustified. Slide. As outlined in the staff report, there was no supporting evidence of an error having, or abuse of discretion having been, having occurred. Nothing was provided by the appellant. No supporting evidence or lack of fair and partial hearing has been provided by the appellant. The planning commissions considered, considered all the facts presented at the meeting, including staff report, staff presentation, testimony by the public, design, engineering professionals, as well as the applicant's representative. No new evidence has been provided. And there was no error has been documented. Next slide, please. I would like to just point out one correction in the staff report is actually page two of the staff report. There's an incorrect code citation. Second full paragraph. Second, second sentence in parentheses, the code citation should read County Code Section eighteen ten two ten and eighteen ten two twelve. Three pieces of correspondence have been received. Those should all be in your packet. Comments from Mike Guth, Amber Jones, as well as the appellant, all reiterating prior statements that have been provided to the planning commission previously. With that, staff recommends that your board conduct a public hearing to consider whether to take jurisdiction of the appeal, the planning commission's action to uphold staff's incomplete determination regarding application two four one four five zero, a proposal to divide approximately sixteen thousand two hundred square foot parcel into three parcels. Construct a new single family dwelling on each of the parcels. And to decline to take jurisdiction of the appeal, the application number two four one four five zero. That concludes my staff presentation. I'm available for questions.
With that, this is jurisdictional here. We'll give the applicant ten minutes as well.
Oh, Britten, Matt's a Britten Architects. Also, John Flynn is attending attorney. John Flynn is attending remotely. I'm here representing the McDonald's. I want to make it clear today, this is not about approving or disapproving this project. This is about the county's process in discretionary permits, which impacts everybody. And respectfully, if this board is sincerely interested in improving the process, that's what this hearing is about. That's it. Okay. So I, I really appreciated Justin Cummings mentioning bad faith. I like Nate, by the way. Don't get me wrong, but still bad faith. This is the code. Permit Streamlining Act supersedes county code. If the application, together with the submitted materials, are determined not to be complete pursuant to subdivision, the public agency cell process for the applicant to appeal that decision, I'm going to jump. There shall be a written determination by the agency on the appeal, not later than sixty days after the receipt of the applicant's written appeal. The fact that an appeal is permitted to both the planning commission and to the governing body does not extend the sixty day period. We are at day one hundred and seventeen. So I would look at Mr. Heath and go, how in the world is this not mentioned in the staff report? That's bad faith. The county staff have said that they do not allow applications to be submitted because they don't have staffing. That's bad faith. Permit Streamlining Act says that you take the application in and you have thirty days. But staff purposely blocks applications to get around the PSA. That says, well, it's when the fee is paid. County, the Permit Streamlining Act says it's at application. And guess what? It's the staff that decides when the fee is paid. So the staff has repeatedly, three times documented on this project, ignored exactly what the Permit Streamlining Act says. That's bad faith. And if you want to approve the process for everyone, you take jurisdiction and you talk about this. I'd love to help with this. I know other architects would go, we can help you get a process that meets the Permit Streamlining Act and meets the intent of what you all want. But that doesn't happen because county staff blocks it. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flynn, if he runs out of time or has more time, I'd like to use it up. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is John Flynn, as Mr. Britten told you, and I do think, in addition to the reasons that were just provided to you by Mr. Britten, that this is a good opportunity for the board to take jurisdiction because the intake procedure for project applications has become very, very confused and improvised. And that the intake procedures themselves are not reflected anywhere in the county's code. And they should be. That's how notice is given to the public and to the world. And it's not enough, even if it's, I don't know if it's posted on the county's website. But the county staff has devised a procedure that enables them to sidestep the requirements of the Permit Streamlining Act. And it's going to get the county into legal trouble. I guarantee it. And, and that's one of the reasons why, one of the primary reasons why it's important to take jurisdiction so that the board has a real opportunity to address the problems created by the procedures that are being followed by the staff. So for example, the fact that an applicant is ready to submit their materials does not mean that the staff will accept the application. The staff says in effect, oh no, you've got to make an appointment. We'll open the E-portal at the time of your appointment and then we'll receive your application. There's no time limitation on when it is that the staff is required to accept the application. It can be two weeks, two months, two years. There's no time limitation whatsoever that the staff has imposed on itself in the implementation of these intake procedures. So in our case, as one of those slides made clear to you, even from the staff's point of view, the project application was received as of November twenty fifth. That's when the clock starts running. The staff has told you, no, that's not when the clock starts running. It's when we tell you what the fee is and you pay your fee and that's when the clock starts running. But there's nothing about the clock starting to run in the PSA from the time that the application fee is paid. Instead, the Permit Streamlining Act says that the thirty day clock begins to run at the time of receipt, of receipt. And that was November twenty fifth. So and I, I, it's hard to tell, but it also appears that the staff is saying, well, it takes us time to figure out what the fee is going to be. But according to eighteen point one oh point two one oh of your own code, it refers to a fee as described in the unified fee schedule as adopted by the Board of Supervisors. Those are pre-established fees. There shouldn't be an additional week or two weeks or however long it takes, which is a kind of an extension of time to start that thirty day clock running owed to the fact that the staff hasn't decided yet how much the fee should be. So you've got this, you've got these very significant weaknesses in the system that are vulnerable to attack under the Permit Streamlining Act. And I think, as I gather from information that I heard recently, perhaps the board is taking steps to deal better with the constraints imposed by the Permit Streamlining Act. But taking jurisdiction over this appeal will afford you more opportunity to discuss the policy implications and the statutory implications of the intake procedures that have been devised by the staff on their own. The a, as I said, and I think this, this bears repeating, the way the system's been set up by the staff, the fact that the applicant is ready to submit means nothing, means nothing whatsoever. And back in the day, my day, it used to be you submit your application and the county receives it at exactly the same time. Now the county has, through the efforts of its staff, a system that says, no, 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 you got to make an appointment. And again, there are no time limitations that the staff has imposed on itself for opening up the portal to receive the application. And that's a huge problem because it means that the thirty day clock is completely under the control, that is, the starting is completely under the control of staff. And if that's the case, then that thirty day clock doesn't begin to run from the time of receipt. It begins to run from the time that the staff says it begins to run. That is, when it opens the portal and then they tell you what your fee is and you pay the fee. In this case, as I said, I think the second slide in the staff presentation showed that the application was submitted and received. That's the starting date for the thirty days on November twenty fifth, which means that the comment letter on the adequacy of the application was due by December twenty fifth and it was not provided to us until January. So it's a clear violation of the Permit Streamlining Act. I strongly encourage you to take jurisdiction over this appeal.
Thank you. We'll now see if there's any opposition to this item. See none? Any online?
I see a hand that's gone up. I'm not sure if they're an appellant or, or in opposition, or if they're just trying to make public comment.
Oh, but that up for public comment just in case.
Quinn, your microphone's now available.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name's Quinn Walker and I am speaking in public in support of the staff's determination. On page three twenty six of your packet, staff explains exactly why receipt of the application does not begin until the fee has been submitted. And contrary to statements made by the applicant, the website details exactly how that takes place and, and that a, a fee is required for the clock to begin. So there's no issue of, of public notice and, and in fact, they were fully on notice at the time that the application was submitted. In short, and as we had presented to the planning commission, the question here is whether the application was received at the time of initial submission or only when it comes with a fee. And as we had said there, in order for applicant's argument to be correct, this would be equivalent to an application being, being seen as received simply be, because it is on the county's website in some sort of draft form or without ever having clicked a submit button, which even though it is in the county's possession, is not technically received. And we think this is the same situation and affirm, ask you to reject jurisdiction. Thanks very much.
Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seen one more?
An additional speaker on.
Okay.
Diana, your microphone's now available.
Hi, everyone. Appreciate this chance to speak today. My name is Diana Walsh and I want to share some current concerns about this application. I applaud the planning commission's vote on this appeal in February and I believe the board should uphold it. It seems to us that the applicant is trying to rush through the process and void giving us the information. We need to really understand whether this process, project meets the local coastal program and zoning laws. Many neighbors have expressed worries about this project, especially since past versions, much smaller ones faced a lot of pushback. A big part of that was around the geologic report, which didn't seem to have solid backing. Another point I want to make is about the application fees. According to Santa Cruz County Code, there are clear requirements for submitting an application. The code says that any discussion discretionary development permit needs to come with a fee as set out in the fee schedule. It's not just about submitting a complete application at the end. The fee needs to be part of the initial submission. The county's website even states that they won't start reviewing an application until the fees are paid. This is all part of the process and it seems like the applicant is trying to skip these important steps. It's also worth noting that the courts have upheld the idea that a complete application is essential for moving forward. There are several cases that back this up, reinforcing that all applicants must submit everything required. California law also supports the idea that agencies can determine when an application is complete based on their guidelines. Finally, having spoken to one of the supervisors' offices, it's my understanding that the applicant can go down to the county and pay their fee. They could have done it in November. They could have done it in February. They could have done it yesterday, last week, tomorrow. I just don't understand why they just don't go pay the fee and get the process started if they're in such a rush and not worry about a hundred and seven or seventeen or a hundred and fifty days. Pay the fee. Thank you.
Thank you. No further speakers?
If I may ask counsel. Oh, nope, never mind. That person put their hand back down. No further speakers, check.
Okay, I'll bring you back to the board for any comments or questions. Supervisor Cummings?
I just wanted to see if staff could follow up on, or could you provide a response to what the applicants had said? If there's anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, sure. The staff report to the planning commission, actually first paragraph outlines the planning department's position regarding receipt of an application. It is the date that fees are paid and the planning commission. And the planning commission accepted that and rendered their determination based on that interpretation.
Supervisor Koenig?
Thank you. Clarification, so I see eighteen ten to ten of our code, application supplemental requirements does mention a fee as prescribed in the unified fee schedule. Are there effectively two different fee amounts here? One that is, you know, applies to every application, but then there is a different, I mean, related to this discretionary application, a different amount, which the applicant was not aware of until the later date? I mean,
That's a good question. In this particular case, the application was submitted through the eportal, and I processed and did the intake and generated fees on the same day of receipt of the application. It wasn't until December third that the application fees were actually paid by the applicant. They have a number of ways they can pay them. They can mail in a check, they can come down and pay them in person, or they can pay them online, in which case this was paid online.
Okay. I'm just wondering if county council can speak to this issue of like, you know, is there, with the permit streamlining act, it doesn't mention payment of fees. Do we have the ability to determine, I mean, it would seem, basically, like, the outcome of interpreting county code would be we would immediately issue a denial letter to anyone who hadn't paid their fees, right? We didn't do that because, I mean, right, the state code says there needs to be a written determination in this case, that the application was incomplete because the fees weren't paid.
So I think, I think to bring it back to what your board is here to do today is to determine whether the planning commission erred in some respect, in either a legal sense or a factual sense. And my office has reviewed these circumstances and believes that while the applicant has an argument, there's not been sufficient evidence in the record indicating that the planning commission committed a legal or factual error that would justify your board taking jurisdiction, consistent with the staff recommendation. So that, that's as far as I would go. I would not advise you to get into the merits of whatever the application is and start having a discussion around those things. I would, I would, I would recommend that you direct your questions or attention to whether or not the planning commission committed an error in some respect, either a legal or factual error, and I have not seen that.
But it seems to me that hinges on this question of, you know, what the state requires, what we require, what's considered a complete application, how we respond to that. And clearly, the planning department, the planning commission had an interpretation of that. Aren't we being asked to determine whether or not that was an accurate interpretation? And in far as our, whether or not we take jurisdiction?
What I, what I can tell you is that we're, we're willing to go to court and support the planning department's interpretation and how it was interpreted. There, another party's going to have an argument on the other side, and we're going to go upstairs and to the court, and we're all going to hash it out if that's the applicant's desire.
Okay. Any other questions?
Supervisor Martinez?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation today. I appreciate the information. I certainly hear the applicant has frustration with the process. And I think there are other routes by which we can, the county can work to improve processes in the planning department and with CDI. So given that, I will make a motion to move the recommended actions and not accept jurisdiction. Thank you.
Second. We have motion from supervisor Martinez and a second from supervisor Cummings?
Just one, I may make a comment before we take a vote. This is definitely sufficiently gray area, and as far as, as I'm reading it, and I'm certainly sympathetic to the idea that we need to do more to ensure we're in compliance with the permit streamlining act as a county. You know, this is state law that was created to really ensure that housing is reviewed and either approved or denied in a timely manner, and that's certainly a need that we have in this county, and I feel like we can do a better job at it. So it's a tough one. I mean, I do feel like if the applicant feels like they've got a case to make, perhaps the better, it will actually would have more weight if it's determined in the court of law, if we're determined we're going to defend this position. I don't, I don't really, first of all, I don't think I, we had the votes to consider this as you know, to de novo hearing and for the board to take jurisdiction. So, yeah, I'm, I'm torn. I don't think it's as clear as, as being suggested to us. I guess I'm going to vote no on the motion. Thanks.
So they can return back to the planning department as well, too, correct?
Correct. The planning commission has deemed the applicant supported staff's recommendation, deeming the application incomplete. So it's in the applicant's court to now provide the information that we've requested.
Correct.
And, and we're hoping that they do.
Okay, so we have a motion from supervisor Martinez and a second from supervisor Cummings. We could take roll call vote?
Supervisor Koenig?
No.
Martinez? Cummings? Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes with one no vote from supervisor Koenig and one supervisor recused self. Supervisor De Sera. Yeah, no, nine. Yes. Next item on the agenda is number nine, as the board of directors of the Davenport County Sanitation District hold a public hearing, adopt resolution setting twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six water and sewer charges effective July first, twenty twenty five, set a public hearing on June tenth, twenty twenty five, at nine AM or thereafter, to adopt a resolution confirming the water and sewer service charge reports and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Ashley Trujillo, civil, senior civil engineer.
Thank you, directors and Chair Hernandez. So I'm here today on the subject item because on March eleventh, the board set today as the public hearing to consider establishing sewer and water charges for the county Department of Sanitation for Davenport. The public was noticed in accordance with Proposition two eighteen requirements. The water service charge that we are proposing today is an increase of point five percent. And the, in fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, discretionary funding allocated to District Three as directorate by supervisor Cummings contributed fifty thousand dollars to the construction of a new water tank. And that's allowing for this low increase in sewer and water, or in the water service charge. So with the proposed increase, the district expects to collect three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars in water service charges. Additionally, we are requesting to increase the sewer service charges four point seven percent. And this increase is due to two main factors. And the operations and maintenance costs are up by thirteen thousand dollars this year, and then we're setting aside ten thousand dollars for necessary work on the sewer infrastructure. So with the four point seven percent overall increase, we would generate three hundred thousand nine hundred dollars in sewer service charges. The revenue study is attached for your board's review, and we will be filing with the clerk of the board and posting electronically on or before May twenty third, the sewer and water service charges. Therefore, we recommend that the board open a public hearing to hear the objections or protests, if any, to the proposed charges, close the public hearing, and on its, on its conclusion, adopt the resolution setting the twenty five, twenty six water and sewer service charges. Set June tenth, twenty twenty five, at nine AM or thereafter as the date and time of the public hearing on the sewer service charge reports, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of the public hearing once a week or two consecutive weeks prior to the date of the hearing as required by government and county codes. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
I'll take it out to the public first, see if there's anyone here in the chambers wishing to address us on this item. Seeing none, anyone online?
I see no speakers online, chair.
I'll bring you back to the board for any questions or entertain a motion. Supervisor Cummings?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff for their work on this, and also just want to thank the voters again for passing measure K, which has allowed us to invest in the water tank project, which ultimately is allowing us to keep those rates down in absent that sales tax increase, we, you know, folks will be seeing themselves being impacted by their rates going up. And so it's just another example of how, you know, us, you know, passing taxes that ultimately are somewhat taxing ourselves, but more in the case of sales taxes taxing a lot of visitors who come in, the benefits that come from that actually help offset costs for residents here locally. And so with that, I'll, I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
We have a motion from supervisor Cummings and a second from supervisor Martinez. Can we take roll call vote?
Supervisor De Sera. Aye. Cummings?
Aye.
Martinez? Aye. Koenig?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have a similar item. The next agenda item is number ten, as the board of directors of the Freedom County Sanitation District hold a public hearing, adopt a resolution setting twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six sewer service charges effective July first, twenty twenty five, set a public hearing on June tenth at nine AM or thereafter, to adopt a resolution confirming to the sewer, sewer service charge report and take all related actions?
Thank you again, Ashley Trujillo, this time representing the Freedom County Sanitation District. So again, on March eleventh, the board set today as the date of the public hearing to consider the increase in sewer service charges. And the public was noticed in accordance with Proposition two eighteen requirements. The proposed sewer service charge increase is an overall increase of two point nine percent that's being proposed. And the largest contributor to this rate increase is the need for manhole and sewer main repairs. And we are hoping that we can collect two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that would be collected for these upgrades. We are also proposing setting aside a hundred thousand dollars that will be collected for our reserves. The revenue study is attached for your review, and the sewer service charge reports will be filed with the clerk of the board and posted electronically on or before May twenty third, twenty twenty five. And so with this proposed increase, we expect to collect one million six hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in revenue. It is therefore recommended that the board open a public hearing and hear objections and protests, if any, to the proposed sewer service charges, close the public hearing, and upon its completion, adopt resolution setting the twenty twenty five, twenty six sewer service charges. Set June tenth at nine AM or thereafter as the date and time for the public hearing on the sewer service charge reports, and direct the clerk of the board to publish the notice of public hearing once a week for two consecutive weeks prior to the date of the hearing as required by government and county codes. I'm available for questions.
First, I'll take it out to the public, see if there's anyone in the public wishing to address us on this item. Seeing none, anyone online?
I see no speakers online, chair.
I'll bring you back to the board for any questions or entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from supervisor De Sera and a second from supervisor Hernandez. We could take roll call vote?
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez? Aye. Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have item number eleven, consider approving in concept an ordinance amending section four point six five point zero three zero of the Santa Cruz County Code relating to the Santa Cruz County Safe Drinking Water, Clean Beaches, Wildfire Risk Reduction and Wildlife Protection Act and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Jeff Gaffney, Director of Parks and Open Spaces and Cultural Services.
Well, I am not Jeff Gaffney. I'm Elisa Benson, your assistant CEO. Jeff had a family matter he had to go and attend to, so I'm here to present this item for you. And Edith is the real expert here to answer any of your real questions. Very quickly, this is a first read of an ordinance in concept related to how measure, the measure Q parcel tax revenues are managed in terms of distribution to cities and special districts. It also would have you schedule the ordinance for second read on the May twentieth consent agenda, should you approve this, and directs the COB to publish public notice of this change. So I'm going to walk you through it. This is a very simple change to section four point six five point oh, oh, three oh of the county code. It deletes the phrase, together with any interest and penalties thereon, from the language that directs that a special fund for measure Q revenues be set up and those revenues to be collected and deposited in this fund. So that sounds very, very simple, right? We're just deleting one phrase. But the why for this recommendation is not, and it drops us into deep intricacies of property tax administration. So I'm going to try in very short order, describe what that is, and then Edith, our ACC, ACTTC will be able to address any of the more technical questions. We are making this recommendation after discussions with Edith and her team that that simple phrase in this initiative, and now in county code, makes administration of the measure Q tax different from nearly all of our other parcel and property taxes. So it sort of sets it apart from the system that we have, and the system that we have is called the TEATER Plan. Stay with me. And, and this complicates the distribution of these funds to cities and, and special districts, if it's not part of the TEATER Plan. So what is the TEATER Plan? The TEATER Plan is an alternative method of tax distribution. And very briefly, in two thousand and ninety, ninety-three? Is that right?
Sure.
Yep.
I think so. Long time ago, the board passed a resolution making us part of the TEATER Plan. And that basically allows us to distribute taxes to cities and special districts based on the calculated amount of their share. This is important, the calculated versus the amount that is actually collected at the different times we collect the taxes. So those are two different amounts. And so if you're in part of the TEATER Plan, you, our cities or special districts, they know what they're going to get, and they can start moving forward and budgeting and making plans. Under, under, I don't think this was intentional in the drafting of measure Q by including the phrase, any interest and penalties thereon, it, it took you out of TEATER Plan territory, and we want to put it back in TEATER Plan territory. So it's administered the same as all of the other taxes we, we distribute for our cities and for our special districts. So by doing this, it allows us to put it into the TEATER Plan, and cities and special districts can, can budget and plan based on the calculated amounts. So effectively, under the TEATER Plan, the county takes the risk of collecting less than calculated. And the sort of trade off is we get to keep any of the the penalties and interest. Penalties and interests, and that's sort of how we manage it. So that's what this is about. And I hope that made sense of it for all of you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can answer, or we have the expert here in case you have other questions.
Thank you for the presentation. That was a very complex, made really easy, easy to follow. So is there anyone in the public wishing to address us on this item? Seeing none, anyone online?
I see no speakers online, chair.
I'll bring you back to the, to the board for any questions or to entertain a motion. Supervisor De Sera?
Very happy to make a motion to approve.
Second, oh. Hernandez got the, the second supervisor, Sera got the motion.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings? De Sera?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number twelve, consider the proposed Santa Cruz County Operational Plan for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five, Twenty Twenty Seven and take all related actions. I'll turn it over to Nicole Coburn, Assistant County Executive Officer. We still use the CEO.
I know, me too. I say it all the time. So good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and members of the board. I'm Nicole Coburn, Assistant CEO. I'm here today with Sven Stafford, a principal administrative analyst in our office, and together we're going to present on the proposed operational plan for the new two-year period of twenty twenty five through twenty twenty seven. So today's presentation, we're introducing this proposed plan. It includes 80 new SMARTY objectives. These cross 21 different departments here in the county. This, for this cycle, we're prioritizing clarity, alignment, and action, building on the county's vision to deliver equitable, high-impact services. This plan also bridges to the next strategic plan and includes objectives that move forward our work on our four foundational cornerstones that have been identified as part of the strategic plan refresh. Since some of you are new to the board, I just wanted to kind of give the high-level overview of how the strategic plan and the operational plans fit together. We just ended the six-year period of the county's first strategic plan that covered years 2018 through 2024. Our operational plan is developed in two-year increments. So every two years, we're developing and presenting to you an operational plan that helps us work towards our goals and the county's vision. So this, this two-year operational plan that's before you today for the upcoming next two fiscal years will bridge us as we're developing our new refreshed strategic plan. And then once we have that new strategic plan, we will be going into the development of our new two-year operational plan that works towards that new strategic plan. So this is really our intention to never have a break in the work and to always be moving towards the county's vision and mission. So with that, I'll move on to the next slide. So the budget and operational plan, which were presented together last week on our operational and budget website, are really working together to achieve our county's vision of a safe, healthy, and affordable community. Over this new two-year operational plan cycle, as you know, we're going to have to navigate significant federal and state challenges. And it's easy to focus on what's most urgent and important, but we can't ignore all the other important work that we have going on as a county that really shape our community for our future generations. The county in this new proposed budget for 2025, 2026 is spending over $1 billion across all of our departments and funds, $800 million just in the general fund. And we'll continue to see $1 billion investments in the county going forward. This operational plan is our commitment to improving our community and helping align the work with our budget and showing what it is that we're doing as a county together. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sven, who's going to talk about how we develop the operational plan.
Thank you, Nicole. Good morning, board. Afternoon. To ensure that objectives were not just measurable but impactful, we used a high-action, high-alignment framework. It's a part of our results count toolkit that we have with, in partnership with the Annie Casey Foundation. Departments were really able to come together and, and think about how they move their work forward at the right levels of the organization to get the best results for the community and the people that they're serving. And also to make sure that those actions they're taking are aligned with the county's strategic plan and with other community plans that we do in collaboration with our partners, such as the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the Community Health Improvement Plan, and Master Plan on Aging and others. Over the course of January, February, March, we had over 100 staff participating in three workshops that we ran in order to get to, get those objectives into that high-action, high-alignment framework. They were able to collaborate with each other and get peer feedback and that those interactions were able to deliver just overall better, better quality objectives across the entire plan. One example of that that I wanted to share is from an Information Services Department Objective on Digital Literacy. So in 2023, that department brought forward an objective to develop a broadband master plan. It made sense at the time because it was going to leverage some local dollars to draw down more state and federal dollars that were coming in to expand access to broadband resources. As part of that work, we also invited our Information Services leadership into a results count cohort that we were running, and they focused their work on the Affordable Connectivity Program, which was basically making sure that people were getting access to subsidized, subsidized internet. During that work, they found using, using data from various places that people, especially in beach flats and live oak, were underutilizing the benefit that they were basically entitled to. And as a result of that, ISD reached out to Human Services and other partners that were working in those areas to just make those folks aware that there is a program that they can use to get access to broadband, which is really, you know, a standard driver of health these days. And so there's still a great need, even though federal dollars have sort of drifted away for this, there's still a great need for digital literacy. There's still a great need, especially in those neighborhoods that are serving Latinos and older adults. And so Information Services, instead of saying, well, there's no funding, we can't do anything, is recommitting to an objective on digital literacy to try to reach those eligible populations through the partnerships that they've built, through the data that they've collected, and doing that in alignment with the broadband master plan, the master plan on aging and our county equity statement. So I just think it's a real trajectory of growth and development in the department and their leadership. As Nicole mentioned, this is also a bridge to the next strategic plan. And we've talked about the cornerstone, the cornerstone, four cornerstones that we've been working on. And so we're bringing forth objectives that deal in each one of these areas on behavioral health. We're, again, looking at strengthening that system, focusing on improving mandated services, supporting integration and building system resiliency. There are a series of health services objectives that we've been developing that will be a body of work that will be brought to the board soon on, on how we're looking at that system. There's also Human Services objective on making sure that we're enrolling 100% of people that are eligible in jail with Medi-Cal. And so that's a, that's an expansion of service that we're, that we're bringing forward. On the housing front, there are several from Community Development and Infrastructure on increasing the supply of housing across all affordability levels, as well as the County Executive Office objective to work on the county permit process work plan to ensure faster permitting and better customer service. On the infrastructure side, the plan has objectives that prioritize modernization and climate resilience of county infrastructure, including critical facilities and transportation networks. This can be seen in a general services objective to reduce greenhouse gas emissions across county facilities and fleet. Parks objective around opening a new park in South County to improve access to the outdoors. And even a Agriculture Commissioner objective to register and inspect all EV charging stations in the county. On the data and finally on data sharing and analysis, we have objectives that recognize the critical role of data in advancing equity, access, public transparency, as well as the need to address and integrate artificial intelligence into county systems. So that includes, you know, a new payroll system that the auditor is working on to update our human resources and payroll and provide real-time data on county workforce. And then from Information Services to establish a strategy for responsible adoption of artificial intelligence and technologies across the county. And as Nicole mentioned, we're also, we're continuing to bridge to the strategic plan refresh. So just in terms of timeline, we are bringing forward objectives that are within this corners, these cornerstones that we talked about. We will be refreshing our focus areas and indicators with extensive community input over the next six to eight months. And then, once the, once the new strategic plan is adopted, we'll be using that fiscal year 26, 27 to transition to objectives that are aligned with the new strategic plan. With that, I'll pass it back to Nicole.
So in terms of next steps, we're asking the board to review the operational plan, and we'd like to hear from you regarding feedback and priorities that you have. If you think we're missing anything, or if we need to make any adjustments, this is your opportunity to help us shape the final plan. We plan to bring back the final plan for board approval at the end of June, on June 24th. And we appreciate your partnership and working with us to build a more effective and accountable government. And we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you for the presentation and all your work from the CEO staff, county leadership on this very inclusive work that you guys have been doing and this holistic operational plan that you guys are drafting. Thank you very much for that. I'd like to open that up to the public to see if anyone wishes to address us on this item. Seeing none, anyone online?
I see no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring you back to the board for any comments, questions? Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work on this and for the presentation. I really appreciate kind of where the operational plan is going. I had a question and I just blanked on it, but I guess one of the things I will say is that I do, I did want to make, oh, there, I got it. So I'm just curious, I know that there was a lot of communication with staff and staff engagement. I'm just wondering how much public engagement was there? Like, were the community meetings held to try to get input from the communities about kind of what some priorities are throughout the community as it pertains to the operational plan?
Um, yeah, we've encouraged departments as part of their drafting objectives to think about who they can be including as they, as they develop those. And so we didn't, as a county, hold a countywide event, but the, you know, for example, the, a lot of the parks objectives were developed in alignment with the park strategic plan, where they did partner with County Park Friends to do extensive community outreach. And so for the departments that do have, that are more public-facing, we do encourage them to really work on that collaboration with their communities, with their implementing partners and so forth.
Great. I did have a couple. So I'm supportive of the staff recommendation. I'm happy to make a motion on the item, but I would like to add, given that that's part of the recommendation here today, I'd like to also add a couple items. One is that this pertains to CDI. And I will say that some of these items that we've already taken action on, but I think it's just, you know, important that we're including in the plan so we can track them. And then, you know, it also, you know, shows us where, what we're able to achieve. And if we're not able to achieve it, we can kind of figure out, you know, what's kind of holding us back and ways that we can achieve it. But I like to add that for CDI, the department will complete the cement plant road bike pedestrian project feasibility study by June 2026. For CDI, the department will develop a parking project proposal for the Sharkfin Cove area and apply for coastal conservancy planning grant during the 25, 26 fiscal year. This is also for CDI, the department will process a coastal development permit for nighttime parking restrictions on the North Coast and take related actions within a year. That's something we've already, all these are things that we've already approved on the board. Communications, so this is, I see no, ISD, I'm communication, a communications plan to address gaps in service for Bonny Doon and the North Coast. And this is related to the sheriffs somewhat with CDI potentially, but open the sheriff's Davenport Service Center in the 25, 26 fiscal year. My office has been in communication, I think with the exception of the communications plan with other departments. And just given the conversation that we've had today around gaps in coverage as it relates to cell service and other issues, you know, the folks in Bonny Doon have now been kind of coalescing because they see the desire and need to have a coordinated effort to address gaps in covers and figure out what can be done to help close those caption and coverage for communications. And I think adding that to the plan just kind of helps us memorialize our intent around this. And as we've seen in previous plans, sometimes things get done, sometimes we're not able to achieve all of our goals. But I think by having these items for the third district within the plan gives us a roadmap and really signals to the community our intention to try to address these issues that have come up in the community.
Just really to clarify, the study you said June 2026, that gives them three weeks?
2026.
2025. Oh.
A year out.
All right, 2025, sorry. I'm a year ahead. So with that, let me see.
That's my motion. Okay. And if anybody wants to add other priorities to, happy to entertain those as well.
Can I just say, I'm one way, happy to receive this feedback and we'll work on generating the objective for this. What our normal process is, is to take the information and work with departments related to this. Because we have the objective, we have the key step. So we'll, we'll formulate something that makes sense. And then obviously we'll be presenting that to the board.
Supervisor Martinez?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I want to start off by saying thank you to the CEO and your team and all the department personnel who've contributed a great deal of time to not just put together this operational plan, but also really to reimagine parts of it based on emerging needs and kind of what we're seeing at the federal level. You know, our operations plan, it really serves as another reminder of just how complex and far raising, far-ranging the nature of our county service. Really enjoyed reading the outcomes that you put in there. I would like to continue the conversation that we're having about the embedding of health and all policies as a framework for future strategic planning. This was an item that my office brought to the board back in February and was unanimously approved by the board. And I know that that item is going to be coming back to the board with some concepts on how that might roll out. So I'm not surprised that it's not here today. But as we look at the various frameworks like the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, the Community Health Improvement Plan, really as like pillars and frameworks, I think my ultimate objective would be that health and all policies is also in there as one of the guiding frameworks. I would like to just take a moment to talk about measurability of certain objectives. I love SMARTY goals. So, you know, I used to be the CEO of a large health and human services organization, and we were very much held to measurable outcomes. And as I reviewed the outcomes in the plan, there were some really excellent examples of SMARTY goals. And then a couple of areas that I kind of want to call out because I would love to see us get more tangible on. You know, a couple of great examples are by June 2027, the Health Services Agency's Health Centers Division will increase unduplicated patient count for individuals at the county-run federally, federally qualified health centers by 10% with a focus on underserved geographical areas who have less access to healthcare. Another example is by June 2026, the probation department's pre-trial services division will refer 75% of clients to one or more community-based services and supports within 60 days of being placed on pre-trial monitoring. It's like, we can really see what those departments are trying to accomplish. But in the area of behavioral health, an area that we have as one of our cornerstone priorities, I noticed that a couple of our objectives are really not very like tangible. One of them, for example, is by June 2026, the Health Services Agency, in coordination with County Executive Office, will align county efforts to meet state behavioral health mandates and position the county to benefit from state program changes. As somebody who's worked in behavioral health, like, I'm not really clear what that exactly looks like or what that means. There's a lot of work tucked into that, but it'll be hard to measure success. But really, the one that's most, I think really needs to be nailed down is this objective number 89, Behavioral Health Access. By June 2026, the Health Services Agency Behavioral Health Division will support residents and lessen community impacts through increased access to behavioral healthcare services. Like, it sounds nice, but it's, it's not, it's not something that we can look back in two years and say like, yeah, we did that. And I think behavioral health is an area, we, there's incredible need. And, and sometimes I can, I can see that there might be a reluctance to want to name what we're going to do because it's scary and it's uncharted and it's hard to accomplish and it's expensive. But if we're serious about ensuring that, you know, 100% of people who are eligible for behavioral health services have immediate access to it when they need it, then let's say it. have immediate access to it when they need it, then let's say it and then we're accountable to it and we can measure it. And let's then put the resources behind it to get there. So that's an area that I would just love to spend some more time digging in on. Moving on to just a few areas that I'm really excited about and, you know, saw some great progress on or look forward to seeing some great progress on. And these are areas, you know, unbiased, these are really helpful to the fifth district and the residents in rural communities. But I'd really like to call out the different projects in CDI, in particular, related to ongoing improvements in our roadways, culverts and bridges, as well as improvements underway for the permitting processes. I think, you know, we've talked up here and even talked earlier today about some of the needs for process improvement and permitting. And I see that documented in here, so I look forward to seeing that. I also look forward to seeing progress in the realms of our parks and open spaces. You know, with the inauguration of the Measure Q funding, we really have an opportunity to expand the parks in our rural areas and the San Lorenzo Valley to apply our natural resource management plans for some of those sites, which I see is in here. And I really look forward to that as well. I do have just a couple of questions related to some specific departmental objectives also that I think are relevant to fifth district residents and also kind of more rural residents. The first is on Objective 29, and it's related to OR3. And I think Elisa might be here to speak to this one. I just had a question because the objective is to launch a public-facing mitigation program with the goal of reaching 300 enrolled households. And I'm just wondering if you could say more about the nature of this mitigation. What would we be working on and how will households be impacted? I just had no idea what that was. Thank you.
I'm here. You guys hear me okay? Yeah, I'm, I'm responding on behalf of Director Reed, who's at an emergency management training, of course. We, we send them to a lot of those. In terms of Objective 29, I will, I'll just be upfront, this was drafted prior to us getting the notice that the Phase Two BRIC grant, the $20 million BRIC grant was being canceled. So that's what some of the, the, that was a premise of both the number and the approach. So I will say we may be doing a little bit of refinement around this before we bring back a final to you at the end of June. Nonetheless, we do want to do work around resilience in this area. And along with many other BRIC recipient counties, we're working with Cal OES on, all right, now that we don't have BRIC, how might some of these hazard mitigation programs be carried out through state funds, through Prop 4, just through a variety of other mechanisms? So I think the intentionality is the same. You guys are seeing this already with our, our baby steps into more resident-facing mitigation programs with our Emergency Watershed Protection Program. So the intentionality is there, but we are going to have to refine this to reflect that our primary fiscal tool for doing this, the BRIC grant, is no longer a reality. So I, I hope that's responsive to your question. Happy to take any additional questions.
No, I appreciate that. That's helpful and good luck identifying additional funding sources for that. The changes in the funding forecast actually kind of leads into my second question, which I think is probably for Director Machado, CDI, which is Objective 38, to complete storm repairs from 2017. I guess, how does that track with our funding gaps related to storm damage repairs? And do we anticipate seeing a call out in future operations plans to close out the other disaster repair lists that we have as well?
It's a good question. So the 2017 objective is, is I would call it a stretch goal, even though we've got obligations from FEMA on all those projects. Because we still have to get quite a bit of the permitting in hand and there still are a number of FEMA hurdles. So it's still a stretch goal for the other disasters, and I'll just pick on 2023. We have very, very, very few obligations. And so we would probably not recommend a similar objective until, until FEMA starts responding to our requests for obligations. Because it's not just a stretch goal, it's an impossible goal, to be honest. But we're hopeful that working with FEMA that we'll get to that point. And, and maybe we'll get there at some point, but today it's not as rosy for 2023 as it is for 2017. And to be honest, that 2017 objective is still pretty stretchy for us, but we like stretch goals, so.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I'm glad to see it in there. You know, I hope we get to a place where we can do the additional repairs that are needed. Like I said, what we measure is where we end up putting our resources and our time and energy and what we can track for the future. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I, I have a response to your behavioral health objective comments.
I would love that. Thank you.
So when we crafted the operational plan, it was in the middle of finalizing some of the work related to our behavioral health system improvement project. We do have performance metrics for each of these behavioral health objectives you have. And they were being, we were finalizing all of that at, during the same time. So we can work with the Health Department to figure out which or all of those metrics that we want to try to make more visible in the operational plan and bring it back to you as part of the final plan.
I really appreciate that. Thank you so much for that update. And those are my final comments.
Supervisor Conig?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Nicole and Sven and CEO Palacios and everyone in your office for creating this process. I think at every board meeting, a number of, of directions and from the board come up. And what I see with this process is really making sure that we have, you know, sort of guiding, guiding objectives, which can not rise above those directors from the board, but at least kind of be that, that we all take the time to agree on. And I mean, I think it's great for board members to add to this, but it's a collaborative process with the departments. And it's also this process of going to everyone in the departments and saying, well, what are you guys working on? What do you see as important? What do you think about when you come to work every day? And so it provides consistency for the county as a whole to make sure that we're actually doing the things that we all agree are important and not kind of being jerked from, you know, one topic of the day to the other. So again, thank you for this particular iteration of the operational plan, but really for the process as a whole. I agree, there's a lot of great stuff in here, particularly around the culvert rehabilitation and road resurfacing. I also appreciate Objective 87 for the County Executive Office, Office to complete the permit process work plan for faster permitting and better customer experience. What I didn't see is something on CDI planning side to actually implement the prop permit process work plan for faster permitting and better customer experience. And so that's something I'd like to see included in the final. You know, just having a work plan is, is not going to be enough. We've actually got to make sure that it has tangible results for, for people applying for permits and ultimately for the housing getting produced. Those are all my comments. Thanks again.
So if there's any other comments, again, I want to thank you guys for all the work that you. Go ahead.
I just have a question. This is super interesting, comprehensive. I can see where each department has submitted some goals for their departments in terms of some process improvements or some things that they would like to contribute. Is there still time to add things into the strategic plan? If I have special ideas and projects that I'd like to see achieved in the next cycle? Or is now the time?
So in terms of overall strategic plan for the county and our overarching goals, we're going to be refreshing that between now and through the end of this calendar year and developing it and bringing a document to you in 2026. So there is definitely time for you to help inform that plan and what goes into it in terms of our overall goals. And then if you have a specific objective that you want to see us starting to work on now, we're happy to meet with you and talk about that and figure out how we could explore what that looks like in terms of which departments would be working on it and whatnot. Everything in here is resourced and is in the budget. So if there are new resource allocations needed, obviously we'd have to weigh that and bring it back to the board to see if we wanted to devote something to that. But we're happy to hear what you have to say and then, and then talk to you about that.
Thank you very much. So do you need an approval on this? I'm sorry.
Yeah, right after.
Hey, go ahead.
Really quick, I just wanted to say also that, you know, again, thank you for all the work. You know, there's several things that are on there already that, that I'm supportive of, of course, 181 Whiting, which is now South County Park. But one of the things I want to make sure is that we plan to kind of expand the scope of that, incorporate Paulson, some adjacent properties as well. You know, working with CDI, OE3, yeah, OE3, environmental, different groups, but also bringing in the land trust and the Measure Q folks, just to kind of expand what we, the vision of what we want to do there. I want to make sure we continue doing the solarization that we're planning on. You know, the charging stations that we're continuing to, to look at, especially in different places like South County. I know we don't have any charging stations there. I'm looking forward to, you know, all this rolling out. And I'm going to also thank Stan for bringing up the broadband master plan. You know, every time I go to MBEP or to CSAC, someone from the state always pulls me aside and thanks me for all the work that we've done to get that information out to the population that needs it. So we, we continue that as well. We do have a motion.
And I'll, I'll refine my motion to move the staff recommendation with the additional direction as, as expressed by the board.
Second. So we have motion from Supervisor Cummings and the second from Hernandez?
Make sure I'm understanding correctly, the additional direction be to incorporate objectives suggested by board members in the final that's presented to us. And, right, great, thanks.
Supervisor Conig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera.
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye. They didn't call me? Oh, they did. I didn't hear it. Next item, we're almost there. Our next item on the agenda is number 13, consider adopting a resolution pursuant to Government Code Sections 7522.56 and 21224 exempting the hire of extra help retired annuants, annuants from 180-day waiting period as a critical support for the Personnel Department. I'll turn it over to Edith Patel, Personnel Director.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and members of the board, Edith Patel, Personnel Director. The item before you today is to seek your approval of an exception to the 180-day sit-out period for retired annuitants under CalPERS regulations. The exception is for Mitsuno Barmeister, former Equal Employment Opportunity Officer who retired on April 26. While we have hired a new Equal Employment Opportunity Officer, it is a single-class position and Ms. Barmeister will be able to provide mentorship, training, technical expertise, and investigative assistance when necessary. Additionally, the bench of investigators is limited and this action will support the county in maintaining compliance with state and federal employment laws during high peaks. With that, I'll end my comments and happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll take it out to the public, see if anyone has any comments on this item. Seeing none, anybody online?
We have no speakers online, Chair.
I'll bring it back to the board to entertain the motion for questions.
I'll move the recommended action.
Second.
We got a motion from Supervisor Martinez and the second from Supervisor De Sera. Take a roll call since you're done.
Supervisor Conig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is item number 14, consider approving the appointment of Laura Bowers to the position of Santa Cruz County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector. And I'll hand it over to myself. So the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Edith. Yeah, let me read this brief statement and then I'll bring it to you. So as the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Edith Driscoll has submitted her resignation and the Board of Supervisors is charged with appointing and replacement to fulfill the role and discharge of the duties of the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector for the remainder of the term. I am recommending the appointment of Deputy Auditor, Controller, Laura Bowers. Attached is a letter from Edith Driscoll, Auditor, Controller, Tax Treasurer, I'm going to make that into an acronym. Submitting her resignation effective July 3rd, 2025. Edith Driscoll has had a distinguished 28-year career serving the citizens of Santa Cruz County. She began her service in December 1996 as an internal auditor, helping implement a Y2K compliant countywide accounting system. She went on to serve as County Audit Manager and Chief Deputy Audit Controller before being appointed Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector in December 2015, and then elected in 2016 and re-elected in 2020 and 2024. Her office is responsible for managing the public funds, collecting over $760 million annually in property and special taxes, including cannabis business tax and single cup tax. As treasurer, she oversaw $2.8 billion in annual deposits and helped manage disaster-related funding during fires, floods and the COVID pandemic. Under her leadership, the county's investment pool grew from $687 million to more than $1.4 billion, benefiting multiple local agencies. She expanded the public access by opening a second office in Watsonville and managed the issuance of 10 short-term bonds to preserve strong credit ratings. Her final bond sale is planned for June 2025. Recently, she secured a revenue agreement with Verbo HomeAway to improve the collection of $14 million in transient TOT revenue. Let me see. Government Code Section 25304 details how the Board of Supervisors is to address a vacancy occurring in elected county office under this scenario. It provides that the board shall fill a vacancy in an elective county office by appointment and the appointees shall hold the office until the first Monday after the January 1st, following the next general election. The primary for the next general election will be held on June 2nd, 2026. It's the board's responsibility to ensure that the services provided by the Auditor, Controller, Tax Collector, Collector, yeah, office continue as seamlessly as possible during this time. Ms. Driscoll has recommended that Laura Bowers as the most appropriate person to discharge the duties of the Office of the Auditor, Controller, Tax Collector until the next general election. Laura Bowers, a Santa Cruz County native, a certified public accountant and a certified public finance officer. She is an established financial leader within the county management. Having served as deputy chief, chief deputy for seven years, Laura first began working in the Auditor, Controller's Office in 2001, serving in various management roles in the office as well as currently serving as the Chair of the County's Deferred Compensation Commission. She also holds a bachelor's degree in business administration from San Jose State University and she is highly regarded finance professional and a natural leader who has the respect of the local government finance community, the employees in the Auditors, Controllers, Treasurers, Tax Collectors Office and the County Management Team. Laura's education, certification and experience all qualify her for this position of California Code and County Ordinance. It is for these reasons that I recommend for the board to appoint Laura Bowers to hold the position of Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector effective 5:00 PM, July 3rd, 2025, until 12:00 PM on January 4th. I'll turn it over to the public to see if anyone would like to comment.
Evening Chairman and Board, Marcus Pimentel, your county budget manager and also community member. And I wanted to just really acknowledge this moment and recognize the incredible opportunity and fortune this county has had to have not only one, but now two and a legacy of amazing auditor, treasurer, tax collector folks. From Edith to now Laura Bowers. From Edith to now Laura Bowers, it is really rare in this day and age to find two incredibly powerful, passionate service-first mindsets who have led this department and working in finance in this region that is a really, really hard position to find. So not only to have now one now and, you know, turning over the reins to another Laura Bowers, who I just have an amazing respect for. I wanted to share you some just examples, you know, this county's had a recently strong run of incredibly successful succession planning with these are my thoughts. Tammy Weigel and ASD to Sherry, Sherry Thomas in the Assessor, Assessor Recorder, Dave Stanford in Agricultural, Agricultural Commissioner, Tricia Weber in County Clerk for Elections, Anna Rizzo, Child Support, and most recently Chris Clark. I mean, these are a run of really good internal candidates who've risen up to that level and provided incredible succession planning and leadership. And I have no doubt that Laura will too. Some fun facts, right? Fun facts. Somewhere around September 2006, some of you might know, there was this little organization, Slupalahente in Watsonville, and they were having a rough time in the early 2000s. Laura Bowers was the one who pulled the thread and discovered all this opportunity that led to a turnaround and a rebirth of Slup that's now serving $120,000, 120,000 patients visits a year. And a lot of that was Laura Bowers findings early on and just doing this little audit test way back in 2005, 2006. Another fun fact, Laura Bowers might be a different space in our career. I might have a little more grade than she, she ever will. But there was a point in time we both applied to the same firm and I only made it to the first round, you got hired. I thought I had a leg up. The firm was Crawford Pimentel Corporation. And they said no to me and yes to Laura. So just congratulations on this, this ultimate choice. And I'm really, honestly, we're all thrilled to have worked with Edith and to have that handed over to Laura. It's just an amazing succession. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and members of the board, excuse me. Edith Driscoll, your ACTTC. It has been my honor to serve the county as your ATCTC for the past many years. It has been my honor to show up to room 100 for the last 28 years. It is now my honor and privilege to recommend that Laura Bowers be appointed as your next Auditor Controller Treasurer Tax Collector. I know no one who is more qualified for this position. Laura is an experienced leader in the world of finance, holding forth a CPA license and a certified public financial professional credential. But also, most importantly, as you see here today, she has the respect of her fiscal friends, her fiscal leaders and members of the board. Respect she has earned in the Auditor Controller's office for more than 20 years. Currently in her role as the Chief Deputy Auditor Controller, we chose not to make it Chief Deputy Auditor Controller Treasurer Tax Collector. But certainly that is the role she has been serving. Laura will meet, sorry, we all know I'm having vision problems. Laura, I need to retire. Laura will meet the challenges of her current fiscal times well as she continues to collaborate with other departments, the CEO and your board. My career has been dedicated to public service and I know Laura's will be as well. Thank you, and I appreciate you accepting my recommendation for Laura Bowers.
So if there's anyone else here, anyone online?
Am I able to speak?
Yes. We'll give you the opportunity to speak right now.
And we have no one online, Chair.
There you have it.
Good afternoon, Chair Hernandez and members of the board. I apologize if I repeat a little of what you've already said, because if I change my speech too much, it's going to get really messed up. But I just wanted to let you know, I'm the Chief Deputy Auditor Controller. I'm a certified public accountant and a certified public finance officer. My family moved to Santa Cruz County when I was two years old. My mom is in the front row, so she was the one responsible for that. Felt in California, to be precise. I'm a proud graduate of San Lorenzo Valley High School, class of 1994. My son in the front row, class of 2023, San Lorenzo Valley. I began my college education at Cabrillo College before transferring to San Jose State to get a degree in business administration with a concentration in accounting. Spent a few years at Crawford Pimentel and Company, as Marcus mentioned, getting a technical experience, both living and working in San Jose. But I always knew I wanted to return to my roots to live and work in the community that I love. So in 2001, I was thrilled to get a job as an auditor for the county of Santa Cruz. Since then, I have increased my responsibilities, including taking on the role of Audit and Systems Manager for a brief period of time. And for the past eight years, I've had the privilege of serving as second-in-command for our department, Chief Deputy Auditor Controller. These roles have deepened my understanding of our systems, strengthened my leadership skills and affirmed my commitment to public, public service. Since day one, I've had the privilege of being mentored by Edith Driscoll, who just spoke. She's taught me not just the technical side of this role, but how to lead with diplomacy, vision and integrity. Her example has been instrumental in preparing me to carry forward the department's legacy of trust and transparency. I am deeply honored to be considered for this role. I bring not only the qualifications and experience, but also a lifelong commitment to this community. I believe in the mission of our county government. I align with its values and I am ready to lead with transparency, accountability and heart. I thank you for your time and for considering me for this opportunity to continue to serve the county of Santa Cruz. And thank you, everyone who's here supporting me. This was not expected at all and I'm so honored. And that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
I'll bring it back to the board for any comments or entertaining motion.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Let me start off by saying thank you to Edith Driscoll. We're just beginning your celebrations and recognition. So this isn't the last time that we have an opportunity to say thank you. But your contributions are incredible, so I didn't want to miss the moment. And I want to say congratulations and thank you to Laura Bowers for your willingness to continue to serve the residents of Santa Cruz County. I can speak about Laura just for a moment because as a community-based organization, in my prior role, I was on the other side of our county's auditing practices at some time. And I can tell you, Laura is tough, which is exactly what we want for a county auditor, controller, treasurer and tax collector. And Laura is also well-respected. And she can fill a room here today, but she could also fill much larger rooms with the folks around the county who have had positive experiences with her leadership and approach. We're really lucky to have you stepping into this role. And I would be honored to make a motion to appoint Laura Bowers to the position of Santa Cruz County Auditor Controller Tax Treasurer.
I'll be seconding that motion, but I want to finish the, the comments from the board. Supervisor Koenig?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'll also start with Edith. I guess this isn't like Supervisor Martinez said, it's an appetizer. It takes a, it takes a while to get out the door. But it's just been a pleasure to work with you over the last four and a half years. You've always addressed some difficult and complex topics with just humor and energy. And so if you ever want to come by the county building, I'm happy to buy you a coffee. You know, however, however you like it and appreciate, you know, your, your perspective on things. And, and again, just the energy that you bring to this complex field of knowledge. And of course, when you said that you were planning on retiring, my first thought was, what about Laura? And I'm glad we had the same, we were on the same wavelength there. And Laura, I just, we could not be luckier as a community to have someone who's just so committed to our county and who has just an incredibly depth, knowledge, rich education and apparently knows how to make sure that people pay up. Oh, well, just thank you for doing this role. It's my great pleasure to support the motion.
Supervisor De Sera?
Thank you. I'll start with Edith too. Edith, I haven't known you very long. I know you're a District Two constituent. I was so impressed with the orientation that I had in your office when I first took my seat. Your energy, intellect, humor, respect from your employees was evident when I walked through your department. And I was very, very impressed. Also impressive was Laura. Your humanness, your down-to-earth presentations, also very well-respected by your colleagues. I'm very excited for you to step into this new role. So congratulations to both of you and enjoy your retirement, Edith. I hope I'll see you again. And if you ever need any help in D2, you just let me know, okay?
Supervisor Cummings?
Thank you, Chair. Well, Edith, it was really sad, but you had a happy moment receiving the announcement of your retirement. We never want to see people go, obviously, who are just, you know, great assets to our workforce and to our county. But then we understand, I mean, 28 years committed to this institution. I could totally see why you might want to leave at some point. And retirement, at least, is, you know, the pathway that, that you're taking rather than, you know, leaving to go take another position. I think that it's your commitment to the county and to this community just been demonstrated in the amazing work that you do and the support you have from so many people in this room. And so when we were recommended Laura to take on your position and seeing the outpouring of support that we have here today, and I'm 100% confident that she's going to do, if not as good of a job, a better job, because the goal is the person who replaces you is going to be better than you. And so I'm sure she's well-trained up and Laura looked really forward to working with you as we really enter a very complicated time. And I know that you've been here working alongside Edith as we've had to deal with some of these complicated times as well. And so really, I think we're very fortunate to have you stepping into this role. And if you ever think about leaving, please come talk to us so we can, like, we can try to figure out how we can keep you here. But I'm, I'm sure that you're committed to, to stay in this community. And so we're grateful that we have you as the option here before us today.
I don't know what else could be said, you know, thank you for all your hard work and dedication, your thoroughness as well on everything. I've had several people in the community already hit me up to see what you're doing to become a nonprofit board member. So they're going to be vying for you to be on their boards. And I'm sure you did a tremendous job, really, you know, mentoring folks and mentoring people like Laura to take and fill these positions. It's, these transitions are not always easy, but I'm glad that there was a transition plan. And you obviously got someone that is very well-talented and well-liked with all her, all her colleagues here. So thank you both of you so much. You've got big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you, you got everything to do it with. So thank you. With that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Martinez?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
De Sera?
Aye.
And Hernandez?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. We will now adjourn the meeting. The next meeting will be on 9:00 AM, Tuesday, May 20th.
Recording stopped.